For them to start, is there something wrong?
They need to go to the link that was sent from boardroom.
Let me, because Dave texted me, so let me go to the the public link first. He's like, I'm waiting to be let in. We need at least-
Hey, we need you to join the public session because we're lacking a forum currently.
And I'm just sending the next one. Renee said-
That's the script for this evening.
Perfect. Did she did what?
I said, you need to go to the link sent from the boardroom, and she said, I did.
This is not my participants.
Yeah, okay. I think we're, I think we're good. I sent the videos, so whenever you want to use those, she knows.
Okay.
She's got the-
Renee is here.
There we go. And then-
Hi Renee!
The other two, whatever. I think it might be the-
That's so, it came from boardroom?
Yeah.
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 Okay, apparently it came from boardroom.
Hi Renee! Hello! Sorry, I was getting on, trying to get on the wrong link, I guess, so.
Are we live on YouTube, right?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Hi, everybody. We're just trying to assemble a quorum here so we can get started.
Yeah, but it'll be on the internet for a while.
And I did respond, Brian, to your email.
Okay. I figured I knew what you were gonna say.
Yep. You were spot on. I think it even closed like last week.
Hi, Dr. Navatney. Is that Dr. Navatney sitting there?
He sure is. It's nice to see you.
Nice to see you again. I wish I was there in person.
We wish that as well.
This probably means that you're having a trip and you're enjoying yourself, so that's a good thing.
Oh, yeah.
Sending the link to Dave?
Yeah, I'll need to send just the regular link and-
There he is.
There he is. We have a quorum. Awesome.
All right. I will now call to order this meeting of the Newburgh School District Board of Directors, and I will, our first order of business-
Director Shannon, I think I'm here.
I'm sorry, Director Brown. Did you say something, Dave? You can't hear us, can you?
Can you not hear me?
I can hear-
We hear you, Dave. Can you hear us? Comedy errors.
Now you can hear me.
Yes.
We, we've heard you the whole time. Can you hear us?
I can hear you just fine, Director Shannon.
Awesome. All right. We're good to go, then. Our first order of business will be the flag salute, which I will lead. Let's go.
And I'm gonna sit, not as I-
We won't take it as a sign of the lack of people.
I appreciate that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next act will be to adjourn to executive session, and I'll hand it over to Lisa to read the call to executive sessions, or I can read the call.
Yes.
We will now-
Do we need to have this as part of-
He'll read it both in public session and then he'll read it again. It didn't work because I put it on the-
We will now adjourn to executive session under ORS 192.602H to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, and to consult with counsel concerning current or possible litigation.
Director Shannon, are we going out and then coming back into a separate one?
Yeah, then I'll go to the executive session link.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Hello, can you hear us?
I'm here.
All right, we are now reconvening to our regular session. Our first item is to review the agenda and we do need to amend the agenda to deal with the outcome of our executive session. So I move that we amend the agenda to add comments and or potential action regarding executive session following the reports and presentation section of the meeting. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Motion is adopted. Any other comments or changes to the agenda? Okay, we are at the public comments portion of our meeting.
Acting Chair Shannon, I have no public comments today.
No public comments were received. Thank you. Board member comments. Director Peregrino.
I don't have comments this evening.
Okay. Director Brown.
Well, I always have a comment. I would just like to say thank you to Dr. Phillips for just being great to work with, really appreciated him a lot. And what he's doing and I also appreciate all the people that are coming to Newburgh, calling Newburgh and wanting to come to our district to work. It's we'll welcome them and it's summertime is always a big transition for public schools. And this one's a big one, but you know, there's a lot of good people coming to Newburgh and that's really exciting. So I'm excited about that. So again, Dr. Phillips, thank you. And Brian, I'd like to thank you very much for you know, all the help on on these board meetings. So thank you.
Absolutely. Director Powell.
Yeah, I just, I I just wanted to say that I enjoyed going to that OSBA board conference. That was in band over the weekend. It was actually really nice to meet other four fellow board members from different districts. And to get to know them and hear what's going on in other districts. And and then leave some helpful information that I can bring back. For so.
Well, we'll have to have you make a report for us when you are back in the flesh here, Director Powell. I don't have any comments for this evening, so we will now move to our consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll be quick, though. So we do have a number of people that are leaving the district for various reasons, retirement, seeking different careers or working same career, but different districts. And I just wanted to publicly say good luck. And I I hope you hope the best for you. Specifically, one person who's leaving is Shanna. She's worked with me closely for the last six weeks or so, and it's been great. So thank you very much. Also, I've interviewed, we have a system here that interviews for teachers take place in the buildings. And and then kind of a final interview of sorts is they I get to meet with them. And to be honest, it's not necessarily, I don't see it as necessarily an interview. I see it more as a 15 minute conversation that I can start a relationship with these new employees. And I think I went through about 15 of them in the last couple of weeks. And a lot of really, really great people. And I'm excited for them to be in our buildings. I'm excited for them to be working with our students. I have three kids that will be in this district. An elementary, a middle and a high schooler. And it's neat to see these people and find out that they're going to be most likely teaching my own kids. And so I look forward to working with them. We also have a couple of new administrators that are coming through and I'm really excited to work with them as well. Today I went with Larry Hampton and visited Crater and CV Middle School and kind of not checked up on, but saw the construction projects that are going on. We also went out to Yuen Young and saw the projects out there and he gave me a briefing on what's going on. That was really neat to see the work that's being done there. And lastly, I've met with four different homeschool families, talking to them about can we partner in a way? Can we work together? I think homeschool parents do a great job. But I also think they might be leaving something on the table. Meaning our school has some great things to offer that homeschool families could take advantage of and partner with us on. So I've had some great conversations and tomorrow night, several of these families are getting together and I'm going to visit them at one of their homes. And we're going to talk about how the Newburg Public Schools District can work with homeschool families, hopefully in a way that hasn't been done in the past. And we can partner to so we can just work together on what's best for their kids. I'm excited about that possibility.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks. And I'm so very excited. Shannon, if you have a copy of the board pack, I'm realizing I got the agenda and the executive. Thank you very much. All right, we're on to our consent agenda. You have approved the June 28, 22 board meeting minutes and accept probationary license contracts, except temporary license contracts, except probationary administrative contracts. Licensed teacher reduction in force effective June 20th 20th. And except licensed teacher resignations. And I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Newberg School District Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, raise your hand. And the major passes unanimously.
Director Shannon, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Not sure, did we, did we miss the union representative comments?
They were not available today, Director Brown.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is out of state travel requests.
Hi, can we introduce ourselves first? Okay, sorry. I don't want to run the show, but hi, I'm Jackie Danner Miller. I'm stepping in as the Ag teacher for next year. I taught Ag for 33 years ago, but anyways, I'm also a special ed teacher for the district for many years. So I brought our officer team, whoops, and I wanted them to introduce themselves and and talk about FFA and why we're going to national convention. So yeah.
I am the current president coming into next year, Fred Sutherland, and Nationals is an opportunity for all of us officers who are going to, we can make new friends. It develops the leadership skills that we use every day in our positions. And it is a lot of fun as well. So there's a great opportunities for us traveling to Nationals in Indianapolis.
Hi, my name is Caitlin. I am the historian for our chapter. And I'm really looking forward to Nationals because I want to use those hands on skills that we studied and put them into real applications.
My name is Chloe Holbit. I just recently graduated from the high school, but Nationals is a chance for me to compete. I recently qualified for Nationals in our proficiency contest. And I've been to National a time or two and it's really like a big thing and it's exciting. It's a great place for people to learn, meet new people. Like I've met multiple from like different states and it's all been like a blast, fun conversations all around.
So yeah, I don't know if you guys are familiar with FFA. It's the largest youth organization for leadership development and it applies applied learning, the career development part, and then the classroom opportunities that so it's a trifecta of the entire program. And so, yeah, I went 22 years ago in a different state, but anyways, it's a great opportunity if we have someone competing and then bring your officer team. We're gonna, as soon as that new building's done, we're gonna like be strong and bring back agriculture. Cause right now, you know, we have to like go into the main building and we lose our shop classes, but hey, we want to keep it going. So we're excited and we're here to ask you permission to travel out of state to Indianapolis, Indiana. And yeah, it's gonna be like 75,000 high school kids and advisors there and parents helping. And so right now they're, we have to like apply for September, right after Labor Day, like's the deadline for all the fees and registrations. But it's a great opportunity to use their skills. And so, yeah, I don't know what we're supposed to do. I've never done this before for Newburgh. Right?
Well, I'll just.
Might have. Well, I just wanted to say I had the pleasure of working with Jackie Danner Miller for years and years. So hi, Jackie, how are you?
Hi, how's it going? I missed you. I saw my sign in my room. Tiger pride.
I would just like to say that I am excited that you are going to be leading FFA. It's in the past been one of the strongest programs of all programs of anything we've done in Newburgh. And going back to the Bob Beckner years, it was outstanding and the people followed. So I'm 100% behind this. This is great. And it's, it's one of the best programs in the state. Anything that's offered in public school, FFA is awesome.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll just read the background. This policy II CA states that out of travel requests must be approved by the board. Therefore, information regarding requested travel for FFA participants to attend the FFA convention in October has been presented to the board and the convention will take place in Indianapolis, Indiana. I'm very excited for you guys. So I would entertain a motion on this.
I will move that the Newberg School District Board of Directors approve the out of state travel requests for FFA participants.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion?
I also just wanted to say how I, how great that program is. Right now I'm actually in Montana on a dude ranch and I got to go out all day today and learn how to take care of all the like hundreds and thousands of birds of cattle all over their their land and it was just such a neat experience and and so, yeah, I think it's just a great program. So yeah, I hope you guys have a great time.
And Fred's right, fun is the main thing. That is the thing that you'll, you'll take with you afterward. So enjoy it. All right, in that case, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the out of state travel request for the FFA participants, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, guys. Enjoy. All right, our next item is a update on our school start times.
Got me my vacation post.
Vacation workbooks, but still definitely summer. So thank you so much. Tammy and I would like to update you about some of the activities we've done over the last several months to really bring back some information about start time and the viability of starting end time changes for next year. And so in terms of like, you know, the first part of the introduction is that we did develop this committee. We met several times. We actually kind of split into a smaller committee that just worked on the, with just different parts of it, but we worked with an elementary, middle and high school team of administrators. And you know, that process I think was really healthy and Tammy's going to talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, yeah, so I would say it it was an incredibly collaborative process with both elementary and secondary folks at the table, having discussions about perceived benefits, drawbacks, start and end times, really at all levels. And so it was great to sit down together at the table. I think that was perhaps a missing component when, when we initially shifted the start time is that there was not a lot of discussion, albeit it was also during COVID and so that was difficult. So it was really important that we worked to understand what the staff needs were, what the student needs were and what parent and community needs were. And the one thing that I think was really important throughout this process is that we agreed that through this process, we were, we were going to align our goals as a K-12 system. We didn't want there to be winners and losers, right? We wanted to to work through this process to ensure that whatever happened or whatever, whatever we eventually came up with would serve all students as, as best as we can. So, yeah.
And going into that with that collaborative process, I mean, we had some hard conversations and those conversations were really productive. When you really do work through problems together and really look at it through multiple perspectives, you learn. And so elementary folks learned about the secondary perspective and why it's, you know, high school really believes it's important to really pay attention to this. But also the high school folks and secondary folks listen to the elementary folks and how successful they feel the current start time and time is for their students. Right? And so that said, we also wanted more information and so we developed a, together, we developed two surveys, one to staff and one to parents. And in terms of just the information, it's going to be very, very brief. I didn't want to do a slideshow because I don't think it's necessary for us to pre, for us to do that. But I do want you to know some of the major information. So in terms of staff, I opened it on a, I think on a Friday, a Thursday maybe. And within, I think maybe 24 hours, I had over 250 staff numbers that took it. It was very hot. So 277 staff had eventually told, took that survey. Of those staff, 70% were licensed, 26 classified and 4% were administrative. So we did get some you know, different perspectives at the table. Of those, 44% were elementary and 51% were secondary and 5% were other of the staff that took it. The results were 50% reported half, that they were happy with the current schedule, the one we have right now. And 44 reported they were unhappy and 6% had no opinion, which I always think that's really interesting when you take it seriously. You're gonna do it, right? And so you can look at the fact that there is a split. It is pretty close between secondary and and elementary in terms of the different perspectives, right? It's not a huge discrepancy. In terms of parents, 569 parents, that was very hot. That that came in very quickly and parents were responding very quickly to the survey. And this is at the end of the school year when people are tired. This is, these are very significant numbers actually of getting this many people that would respond. 569 persons took the survey. Now you understand that they might have multiple kids, so these percentages are wonky because it's not going to be 100%. Because, for example, 50% were elementary. They took the, the survey, but again, it's only 569 parents, right? So that means 50% of the folks that took it had an elementary child. How about that? Cause you could say you have an elementary, a middle, high school kid. 96% had secondary kids. So there was a larger percentage, that's 544 secondary parents indicated that they had that. And so in terms of the response, 56% reported they were happy with the current schedule and 38% were unhappy. And again, 6% were no opinion. Very interesting. So there is a difference between the staff perspective and the parent perspectives on this right now. I'm not going to extrapolate why. I did read all of the comments. Those comments were pretty clear that it was split in the, in the staff based on the fact that secondary perspective was that kids were missing out those last periods of the day and they were concerned about athletics, taking kids out of classrooms. Elementary staff reported that they thought that the new schedule worked very well for kids being attentive, coming to class ready to learn and being supervised effectively in the morning. Right? Parents reported again, very similar responses, which is if they had kids in sports, they were less happy with the start time and time. If they were elementary parents, they were very pleased with an earlier start time so they could get their kids before school to their and then it was easier to find childcare after school. So very, very similar, I think, Director Shannon, of some of the information that you shared when you were actually presenting it. It was like, that's part of the research, right? So that is important information because we said we were going to do them and we made sure we did that and got that back to you. So the, the complexity of the situation, even with this collaborative process, is that busing is a central component of making a decision about certain end time. We met with the new transportation services. We had to wait a bit because they were not online yet. So we had to wait until they actually got organized and they were here and we actually sat down together with Shiloh and Tammy and Jen Bailey was here representing elementary and secondary. I was there and then two of the transportation service managers were there. And we looked through all kinds of ways of how we could shave a few minutes off here or there to make it not as a discrepancy that we were trying to get closer so that there were, it was easier for us to release a little bit earlier for secondary. The, yeah, I'm just kind of black and white. The response was without knowing the routes and without knowing the timing necessary for next year, the transportation service managers recommended that we not change because they really don't know if they could do that faster turnaround time.
And I would say the one thing I appreciated about their And I would say the one thing I appreciated about their transparency was that they weren't, I am a believer that you never overpromise and underdeliver. And so they were very careful about not saying that they could do something and not actually being able to follow through. So.
And we tried all kinds of things, you know, we was like, how about this and how about that? And we had lots of lots of numbers on the board. We were trying to figure it out. And they finally just said that if if it was under an hour between the two levels, they would feel very uncomfortable. And that means that we couldn't shave those few minutes down to do it. Does that that does not mean we could not do it in the future. At this point, they just don't know and they don't know how many drivers they're going to have. And they don't know, they don't want to start the school year in a chaotic situation.
So I guess my belief is, my thought and my belief in terms of where we're at, do I believe it's an impossible task? No. I I think it's pretty evident that we need more time and that we have to look at at the scenarios that unfold this year with a new transportation company. So I think that we're going to have to continue to collaborate. I will tell you that the one very refreshing thing about this process is we had an opportunity to collaborate as a K-12 group, which we haven't done a lot of in a long time, and I hope to do more of that. So that was very positive. We're going to have to continue to gather more information. I do believe that something is achievable. And I want to be clear, I don't know that the start time is the issue with secondary students. It really is about when we end and the impact that it has on our students' academics. So I I do believe that there are some solutions that can be found, but we're going to need more time to work on it. The the other thing that we talked a lot about is, again, I I don't, the last when we switched to this new schedule, because of a lot of circumstances, there was not a lot of opportunity for collaboration and really, you know, sound input and problem solving. And so the last thing we want to do is try to make a rash decision and and have it, you know, be detrimental to one group or another. We we really do want to create a scenario where there's a win win and we can find some common ground. So I think moving forward, we'd we'd like to use this year to continue to collaborate and continue to talk to stakeholders and try to find those little edges where we can bring bring us closer together and find some common ground. You know, my, I will tell you selfishly, 8:45 is a great start time for me. That's selfish. I know that the earlier start time is better for my students for a variety of reasons, or at least a good chunk of them. And I believe that we have, we have the responsibility to try to serve all of our students. And so that's really where I'm coming from.
Yeah. And I really think that the collaborative process is really what we're here to talk to you about, which was this was very purposeful. And it really resulted in a stronger administrative team and not a divided team. This was basically everyone happy to come together and share their opinion and try to figure out how to compromise. And it was with a good heart and with good intention, right? It was not episarial. It will continue and I think that we should make sure we include other voices at the table because I just with the survey results, parents have strong opinions and have concerns about changing start time and times. And I we did not, you know, I know that there were surveys that went out with the board proposal. And I would say that it's time for us to check in, right? And make sure that we're checking in again with families. One size is not going to fit all and it will always be unpopular with one group or another depending upon what their circumstances are, what their childcare is, how old their kids are and and how involved their kids are in after school activities and athletics.
Very good. Well, thank you for that report. Would it be possible to send the results of that survey to the board?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I wanted to make sure that in fact I can easily just share it with Wikipedia.
It would be great, I think, for you guys to read those comments too. You know, they they really run the gamut. And so it's, I think, would be great for you to understand kind of where some parents are coming from and then certainly, yeah, certainly the staff as well and and how it positively or negatively impacts their ability to deliver sound instructions.
Well, that's great collaboration. Do any directors have questions?
Yeah, I I did. I guess my my question was to you, Tammy and Karen is, you know, I know this is a big one. Thank you for for diving into it. I know there's plus and minuses to both sides. I guess my thing is, is, you know, sometimes we get so busy.
Let's see. Dave, you cut out there for a solid 30 seconds, so you might want to just start from the beginning.
So I I guess my concern is, like, I love the whole collaboration thing. Who's going to take the lead? Who's going to be all over this thing? Because this is a big, big, big question. And then so we're not missing anything that that collaboration stays kind of current. There's so much on the plate for all administrators and Dr. Phillips and everybody that stay in current on this thing, stay in fluid. I know this is kind of an extra thing to take on, like especially if you, you know, Principal Tammy, it's 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 another big project. So I guess just stand on top of this thing big time so we have all the best information for for K through 12. But, you know, who's going to be that person that counts?
Yeah, I I think Karen and I will ensure that we stay on top of it. This is important to me because it's important to kids. And so I will, I will.
So there's a core group of us. It would be Jen Bailey at the elementary and at the elementary level, and she's very committed. Tammy, Principal of the High School, is very committed and I'm very committed to facilitating collaborative conversations. It's a mutual leadership, so I don't want to say I'm leading it because I don't believe that it is, but I can help facilitate it.
I appreciate that, you guys. Thank you. I just, it's gonna be a tough one, but it's exciting kind of too. Because, you know, whatever our student achievements, you know, anything we can do to make that better, that's that's the board's intent.
Yeah, and watch out. I'm going to keep that block schedule conversation going too. So, you know me. So, all right, you guys, thanks.
Thank you, guys.
All right, on our edited agenda, we are now at comments and or potential action regarding the executive session. Is there any discussion or would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that the board uphold the superintendent's recommendation of dismissal of Mr. Vias from employment with the district.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Motion passes unanimously. All right, on to our first topic of old business, board vacancy interviews for Zone Two. And I guess we'll bring up just in order of how it's on our packet. Our first one is Mike Carey. The questions are in our packet. Lisa, are we asking all of the questions or are we limited time limiting ourselves here?
The way we did this, the first 10 were the basic questions. The ones after that were additional. So maybe start with the 10, see how it goes, see if it answers anything, you know, if it leaves you some gaps, then you can follow up.
Do do the directors want to round robin the questions?
I just, I did write down a couple of questions.
Are questions not in the packet allowed, Lisa?
I mean, they're in the packet.
They're in the packet, okay.
I just pulled a couple of them out because I didn't have the whole packet.
Director Powell, I will say your audio is very poor. If you have something that you can do with like a headset or something, it might help. But or move closer to the computer, maybe.
Okay, so you're taking one, two, Renee, three, Dave, round four, and then we go around and around and around.
Yeah. All right, so our next one is Shelley Cole. Right over here is fine. Did you want to say something before we begin? Questions? Just a brief statement?
Um, I'm I'm very happy to be here and thrilled you're considering me.
All right, so we're going to take turns asking you questions here. That's all right. First question, why do you want to serve on the Newburgh School District Board of Directors?
Several reasons. First of all, I am passionate about public education. I had a great education when I was going through school and it set me up for life. I would like the students now to have the same type of education and opportunities. And I think it's very important that we that we come together and listen and try to create a learning opportunity for our students where we teach them how to think, not particularly what to think, but how to think. And and also just, I I think it's it's important that we that we listen and 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 so I I believe I have those skills. And so I think I could make, I could help you all make a difference.
What is the role of a school board?
The roles primarily would be passing passing, not, I don't want to say laws, but I policies, thank you. Policies that are going to help our students succeed. And what are those? Well, that's where we come in with the listening, the assessment. But if we stick to that, we'll be successful. Also, passing policies that provide for the funding for all these these different opportunities. So primarily, those those would be top and then also making sure that we're giving that these policies are setting our students up for success in life as they graduate. They should be able to go into a four-year college and be successful or the military or raise a family, trade school, whatever. And so if we can do that, we're doing our job.
Who did we say would be?
If appointed, are you interested in officially running for the position in the spring of 2023?
I think you asked, would I run for the position? Is that? As of now, yes.
Director Brown, your turn.
Okay. What do you hope to accomplish as a member of the Newburgh School Board of Directors? What would be a goal of yours?
The goal should be to leave the school in a better place in terms of enrollment, in terms of student enthusiasm, public relations, and just a a top environment for our students to learn in. So if I could help accomplish that, that would be wonderful.
What do you think are the most pertinent issues facing Newburgh School District?
Some of the most pertinent issues would be enrollment. And there's, I know nationally there's a declining enrollment, but we could, we could make steps to improve upon that. I'd also say funding due to these diminishing enrollment. Also, I would say public relations and COVID-related interruptions in learning.
Do you have any special interests related to schools?
I would say beyond excellence in what I've already said. My first career, I was a professional symphony musician. And I got my start in the schools, in the music department, bringing in, I I was percussionist, my drumsticks, practicing, and I'm so grateful for that. And I think extracurricular activity is paramount. Now, it would be sports, arts, volunteering outside the school because that's where the students learn the teamwork, the self-esteem, the ways to interact. And also in terms of enrollment, if kids have something they're more excited about, like like being on the basketball team or whatever, we're going to, we're going to get more kids in schools. So I I would say that's my special interest.
Thank you. Renee?
Please tell me a time when you had to handle an emotional confrontation.
I would say, I'm looking back, I spent 30 years in commission sales, selling to attorneys. And so, so I had some challenging positions, challenging times. But I would say I'm remembering one time in particular where I got a call from a desperate attorney. He was trying to get into court and our system had collapsed. And he was like frantic and just like, when am I going to do this and that? And I paid all his money. You said he was reliable and all this. So the first thing I I did, in which I usually do, is empathize with him. I mean, I really did. Can you imagine? You know, you're trying to get to court and your system's broken down and it's our system. And so I really empathized with them. Then I asked questions so I could get to specifics and and I I wrote everything down, got it. And then I told him then what we can do. And I said, you know, we can't give you last night back. I'm so sorry for that. But I'm going to have the best technical person that I know. I'm going to call him. I'm going to walk him through this. We're going to resolve this. And to help make up for some of your, some of your pain, I'm going to give you access to our whole system. I mean, which is of great value. And usually I can only do it for 24 hours. I'm going to give it to you for a week. Because what happened to you, that really sucks. So and he was, he was, you know, appreciative. So it didn't solve everything, but yeah.
All right. What special app? Oh, I'm sorry. Director Brown, sorry.
Okay, it didn't hurt my feelings too much there. My question there, it's kind of a crazy one, but the school board meets on Tuesdays. We're probably going to stay with the same of that twice a month. Occasionally, there's an extra meeting in there someplace. Do you anticipate any problems with any of that in your schedule?
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you very much.
What special attributes, talents, or abilities will you bring to the school?
I would say probably my, some of my special attributes would be, first of all, my enthusiasm for making, in positive attitude. I'm also very disciplined. I can work well independently and as a group because if if you're not doing the work, it doesn't matter how devoted you are. And then I would say my people skills. I I can do active listening. I can do public speaking. A lot of times we get answers to our our issues. And if we can't communicate them well, then everything's lost. So a way of communicating and and just a real passion for for helping the schools get better and getting our students back to learning after COVID.
Do you have a priority concern regarding the district that has not been discussed this evening?
No.
Okay, and how would you approach a divided community?
I would first of all, try to listen. try to listen and empathize. And then again, repeat back to them, just, uh, uh, I hear what you're saying. And then I try to focus on what we all can agree on. Like, don't you want, uh, your child to be able to do well when they leave here? Don't you want them to be objective thinkers? Don't you want them to be, to assimilate? And to be strong and, and don't, don't we want all that? And then try to get them nodding their head and agreeing, and then go from there.
Great.
Director Brown?
Um, kind of a tough question there. You have been through a tumultuous time in Newburgh, obviously. Uh, being on the board hasn't always been the easiest thing. The society out there is a little bit different when they can talk and say things out there on social media. They might lie, they might make stuff up about you, your family. Are you prepared to handle, uh, any of that kind of unfairness?
Yeah, it's never easy to get criticism, especially when you think it's unfair, um, or if they go after your family. It's never easy. However, the way I would approach that is just to say, hey, they're, they're not upset with me personally. They're upset with the chair. They're upset with who I am, what, what I represent, but not take it personally. And I think if I do that, and if I know that I'm acting in the best interest of the, the kids, I'm gonna be fine. I hope, I, I didn't say that, no.
Uh, do you have any questions or concerns about the work of the school?
No.
I don't have any more questions.
I do not, I do not have any further questions.
I'm also good, uh, Director, uh, Chen, I'm good.
Okay. Well, uh, I'll give you a chance to say some closing remarks if you would like. Otherwise, um, we can end the interview here.
I just wanna say again, I'm very appreciative that you're considering me. If you elect me, I will do everything I can to be successful and make you happy that you decided on me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next candidate for Zone Two appointment will be Scott Winter.
That's a great way to enter an interview. Hi there. Welcome. Thank you, thank you. It's good to be here.
Uh, so I'll give you the same chance, uh, opening statement if you'd like.
Oh, not really. Just, just thanks for the opportunity. I'm excited about, you know, what, what might happen here in this next year, so that's about it.
Wonderful. Uh, why do you want to serve on the Newburgh School?
You know, I felt a nudge, uh, to get more involved in the community. I moved my business out here to Newburgh, uh, probably seven or eight years ago with that intention, uh, and I haven't fully kind of fleshed that out yet. Um, the school board was one of the ways in which I hoped to get involved. Um, and so it just seems like a great way to, and a great way to have an impact, a great way to use some of the experience and skills that I have in the community.
Uh, what is the role of the school board?
You know, um, I think the role of the school board is ultimately to take care of the business of the district, uh, but with a ear to the community, with a pulse in the community. Um, and to foster with the, with the superintendent, to foster an environment where kids can succeed, where kids can prosper. Um, I think we have, as a board, have a, a big impact on that and can set a tone and so forth, and so I'm excited about that.
Okay, and if appointed, um, are you interested in officially running, um, for the position in the spring of twenty twenty-three?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Think I'm up, right?
Yep.
That one there. Um, I'm gonna go back to the other one. Again, I, I think you, you, you kind of answered it, but again, our schedule can be a little bit crazy, like, you know, um, we're, we're probably gonna stay with Tuesday nights, uh, but there, uh, as a busy year comes up, we can have, uh, more meetings, board retreats, all kinds of things like that, special meetings that get called. Uh, how do you anticipate that working into your, your business, your personal schedule?
So being self-employed, I, I, you know, I have the benefit of setting my schedule, and so I have a fairly flexible schedule. Certainly I have a busy, uh, financial practice, but, um, I'm not concerned about the time commitments and the ability to meet them, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
What do you think are the most pertinent issues facing the Newburgh School District?
You know, I think, you know, some of the things have been mentioned. I, I, I put a few things out there on the application, enrollment certainly. You know, some, I don't know what the percentage is, but, but enrollment certainly is an issue. Um, teacher-staff morale, um, those two things I'd like to, you know, I'd like to get to the bottom and ask questions about what, um, what led to that. What was the environment that led us to where we're at right now? And to find ways to, uh, remedy that. I think that, uh, certainly the, um, relationship with the community, it's been rocky, uh, over the course of the last year, and I think we've got some work to do in terms of, uh, reestablishing relationships and possibly repairing relationships and, um, you know, ultimately, um, reconnecting with the entire community.
Sorry about that. I apologize for my delay here. Okay, do you have any special interests related to school?
Um, not particularly. I don't, I don't know if I totally understand the question. Could you elaborate on that a little bit?
To give an example, as, uh, uh, as Ms. Cole said, uh, that she my understanding was that her interest is about extracurricular, extracurricular activities. And, um, I
I think I'll say kind of in a broad sense, um, the creating an environment where humans can flourish, I think would be the ultimate, you know, special interest of mine. And I know that's somewhat broad. Uh, but I think approaching it with, uh, with a mindset like that allows us to fill in a lot, all kinds of blanks and to do a lot of things that could contribute to that in, in, uh, in schools and the Newburgh community for that matter.
Thank you.
Hey, um, can you please tell me a time when you had to handle an emotional confrontation?
So I work in, uh, the, uh, financial planning world. And as you may all be aware, we're sitting in a bear market right now. I've had all kinds of opportunity for emotional conversations over the course of my career in general. Um, certainly, you know, in my previous life in the corporate world and so forth. And, you know, I, I would approach any one of those in, in a similar way. Certainly if I've wronged somebody, um, finding, you know, finding out the ways in which I've wronged, you know, in this situation and find a way to, to repair that relationship. But ultimately, you know, I think that it's ultimately about empathy, as, as Shelley said, understanding what, where this, this person or a group of people is coming from. And listening and hearing, actually really hearing what's going on. And then doing what's within my control to fix it. I guess that would be the, that would be my answer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think I'm up here. Um, this is kind of a long one, so, uh, uh, you know, hang out with me, Scott, on this one. Uh, have you had children in the Newburgh School District? If so, have they graduated from the district or are they currently enrolled uh, in our school or another public or private school in the area? If they are currently enrolled in an, uh, another public or private school, what are your plans if you are appointed to the board? What is your feeling about serving on a school board where your children, uh, are or are not enrolled?
I, I have three daughters that all matriculated through the system, and my last one graduated, uh, twenty seventeen, I think, just graduated from U of O this last spring. And all three had what I would consider be, to be very good experiences. Uh, so, yeah, I don't, so, yeah, formerly had kids, don't currently, um, maybe someday grandkids. Um, although I gotta convince my daughter to move back from, the one that's married, to move back from Montana, which will be a hard task.
Thank you.
Um, what special attributes, talents, or abilities, uh, will you bring to the school?
You know, I would say experience, uh, experience on boards. Um, I've served on the George Fox University Board since somewhere around twenty thirteen. I may be a year or two off on that. Um, which has been, I mean, the, the university's been through a lot in those times, and so there's been a lot of opportunity for, you know, hard conversations and, and, um, just, um, complex issues and, and those kinds of things. So I would say experience on boards. I think I have an ability to, to appeal and to, uh, uh, connect with a diverse group of people, uh, which I think might be pretty important, uh, in this scenario. And, you know, I just, I, I think that I, I have somewhat of a high bar, I think, for, for where we need to go and what we need to do. And, and so I think that's, you know, within reason. I think that's, uh, you know, that's, that's important as well. We need to have high expectations. And so I would say those would be some of the main ones.
Do you have a priority concern, um, regarding the district that has not been discussed this evening?
No.
And I don't have any other further questions because you kind of already answered one of my other ones, so.
I guess I had one more, uh, back to your previous one there. Uh, high expectations. How would you, could you define that a little closer?
Well, you know, I hear, I hear us talk about national trends and those kinds of things, and I think we have, we are not a national trend. Uh, I mean, we may be on one end of, of a national trend, so to speak. Um, but ultimately, I wouldn't, I don't want to define ourselves by national trends. I don't wanna, you know, I don't want us to think that something's okay because it's a national trend. Um, and so, you know, I don't know necessarily specifically what that looks like. In terms of, you know, what bars need to be raised, but I think that's where a great relationship with a superintendent comes in, because the superintendent would have the, you know, the finger on the pulse of what needs to be done. And so I think as a board, we need to rely on, um, you know, a critical thinking, um, seasoned superintendent to help us to understand the ways in which we can raise the bar. And so I guess it's just, um, it's just more of a, you know, an expectation from the outset that we're gonna set a high standard and, and I think, um, kids, teachers, administrators, et cetera, will, will rise to it.
Um, how would you approach a divided community?
I'd approach a divided community with a, uh, a listening ear, uh, with, uh, openness, curiosity. I mean, I, I, I don't know how else you can do it. I mean, it's, um, you know, we are really divided. It's, it's, it's just been very, very interesting, but I think that, we can, you know, I think it can be overcome with a significant amount of empathy and openness to what we're hearing and a curiosity, so.
One more, I think it's a two in one. Um, are you prepared for the public shots and comments that will come your way and potentially lies that will be said about you and, uh, and your family? And are you prepared for that kind of unfairness?
You know, I mean, who's prepared for that, right? I mean, it, it, it's, uh, it's, I think where I go with that is that I am confident in my community. I'm confident in the people who I'm connected with. I'm competent, or I'm confident in the stakeholders that I interface with in this community. And what somebody says on Facebook or whatever story, you know, stories they're telling themselves, so to speak, about what's going on is really not something I need to lose sleep over. And so I guess I would, I would rely on my relationships, on my very strong community and my very strong, um, cohorts, stakeholders, et cetera.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Uh, Director Brown, did you have any further questions?
I did not. I appreciate it, Scott. Thank you very much.
And I guess, uh, any closing comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, no, no closing comments, but I, you know, I'd love to hear, you know, how will we define success in the next year? I mean, how, how do you see that, uh, in this next year? How do we define success?
You're asking us?
Yeah.
Oh, uh, well, that's interesting. Uh, I know we're going to be working on our strategic plan, and so I think putting together, uh, the strategic plan for the district will help us see the path that we need to take to get to success.
Yeah, I agree with that and, uh, being able to, um, through very, uh, common sense and, you know, laser focus on the students, uh, and all the students, uh, bring our community together and, uh, that I think that will be along with our plans and the work that the superintendent will be doing with the team, you know, the entire team will be, uh, you know, the, the beginning of that, uh, improvement on education. I think that we will be able to see that and that, and, and heal them.
Okay, yeah, good, good, okay.
Yeah, and I would like, um, you know, to focus, of course, on, uh, enrollment, you know, and, you know, and education as well, and yeah, just the healing and just being there for all students.
Yeah, I would say for me, Scott, I appreciate your comment on, uh, raising the bar. I think that's, uh, working at the high school for twenty years and coaching for much longer than that, I think that, uh, you know, raising the bar can mean many different things to different people. Um, but, uh, I agree with that. And I, I'd also say too, that, you know, with a new superintendent, uh, we have a, a new direction, you know, I'm excited about. And I feel like he's already made a, a really good, strong start. And like you said, listening uh, to the community is, 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 is part of that as we go through this process of, uh, change and healing and, and moving forward. So that's what I would say.
Great. Well, thank you. I'm, I'm excited about what can be, and so appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Do we have? Do we have Mr. Carey?
We, I never heard that.
Could, uh, he was here at the start when we were doing the, do we have his phone number? Okay, okay. Well, it's a shame. Hopefully, are we supposed to vote on these uh, at the, after we've heard from all the candidates, or should we vote on Zone Two first?
Couldn't you go on to Zone Three and then maybe by then the other candidate would be?
Yeah, yeah, let's do that. We'll try and keep straight who's running for which seat. Uh, all right, so the next, uh, person would be Scott Pine. Hello.
Hello.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, would you like to make an introductory statement?
Uh, Scott Pine, retired. Been here since nineteen seventy-eight.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for being here tonight. Uh, why do you want to serve on the Newburgh School District Board of Directors?
A lot of people have talked to me about it lately. Uh, I saw some of the disruptions that's been on the board. And I thought I could time to come forward and step into this type of a job and see how it works out. I've been in retail for thirty-eight years. So I, I know how people react. I know the different opinions people have. So I thought I could bring a sense of calm.
Uh, what is the role of the school board?
Well, it's student enrollment, budget, uh, community, uh, kids. It's, it's a big budget. A lot of kids, uh, a lot of people you have to talk to. Uh, a lot of opinions you have to listen to. It's, uh, enough job.
Hi, um, do you have any special interests, um, related, um, to schools?
Oh, I've not any special interests. I mean, the kids went to school. not any special interests. I mean, my kids went to school here, nieces gone to school here, grandkids went to school here. I guess that's a special interest. I've refereed basketball games here. Some, some baseball. So I've, I've been in the district for a while, so know a few people.
Thank you.
I'm up. I think my, my question would go ahead and go back to what I asked the Scott there was, is when you hear the term raise the bar and higher expectations, what's that mean to you, Scott?
Besides hijack? No, it's, it's enrollment. Basically, and it's who graduates. That's raising the bar.
Okay.
Who moves on to the next year without holding back?
What do you, were you done, Director Brown?
Yes, I was. Thank you.
What do you think are the most pertinent issues facing the Newburgh School District?
Again, it's a number of students involved. How many did we lose? And why are we losing them? What can we do to bring them back? Open the doors. Ask them what we can do to get some of these homeschool kids involved back into the school and why they don't want to come back. So we need, we need those answers because without those answers, you're not going to move ahead on why they're not coming back. And are they actually leaving in more numbers than we know?
Once appointed, you would have to run for the position and the next school board election time. And there might be competition. Are you interested in officially running for the position in the spring of 2023?
Spring of 2023. Can I let you know then?
Sure.
Okay. I mean,
Of course.
Never been on a board before. So I mean, I mean, I'm open to doing it. But I'd like to see.
You like to do it first.
Yeah.
I get it. Thank you.
Sure.
Could you please tell me when you had to handle an emotional confrontation?
Well, in, in retail, emotional confrontation is when somebody spends a lot of money on a pair of glasses. They don't like them. But that's, that's small stuff. That's, that's easy. Death is, is, is emotional. When somebody passes away suddenly. You gotta step back and take a breath. You can't you step back and take a breath. That's what you do.
Hey Scott, I think it's my turn here. I'm kind of combining two questions right here, but you know, we've been through a lot in the last couple of years. It hasn't just been six months, 12 months and like a former person here said, you know, being on a board's difficult, not always easy. What do you, what do you see and how do you feel like you could come in and, and add to this current board to move us forward through the healing process, raising the bar? How do you see your skills come into play there?
You know, when you guys were recalled and there was a vote, I thought it was a real close vote. There's only a lot, you guys won by 2,000 votes. I mean, it's almost 52, 48. That's close. I don't know what anybody can do with that type of thing. I mean, that's hard. That's pretty, pretty well split. Because it can go either way. That's tough. Be open and honest. You know, that's it. That's the best way, being open and honest. And if you have, if you're in the right, I mean, if you can stand by your, your justifications of what you're doing by stating these facts, then, then that's a good thing. And that's what I would tell you to do. Or that's what I would do. I stand behind these facts as being truthful.
That's good. Thank you.
Do you have any questions or concerns about the work of the board?
What you said something about the other gentleman asked you something about projections for next year. And then you said you had a what was the word to use?
The what? Strategic plan?
Yeah, strategic plan. What is your strategic plan? Is that something we should know?
Well, it's, it's something that we put together on a cyclical basis. The one that we had in existence just expired last year. So now we have to build a new one. And it's essentially your vision over a certain period of, say, five years, where you want the district to go.
So.
What, what constitutes success and how you want to get there?
So you already have one or you're making?
We're going to make a new one this year.
You're making a new?
Yeah.
So I had the last one come out.
Oh, in terms of hitting the goals?
Yeah.
Well, that's going to be part of the process of, for the next one. That's sort of the starting point as you look at, look your last one, see what you did, what you failed to do.
Okay.
See what's still important to you, what needs further progress. So that's all part of the process.
I'll repeat two for one here. Are you prepared for the public shots and rude comments that will come your way? And that people may say lies about you and your family? And rude comments and just, are you prepared to handle that kind of unfairness if it comes, if it happens?
I'm prepared to handle it. That's not an issue for me because I'm not on Facebook. I'm not on Twitter. You know, it's like, I have an email, so, you know, it's like, that's all I have. I have a phone. But do you expect more of this to go on? Because you've asked that question to everybody so far.
Um, it's not that I, you will, will become a public official. There's more a public person.
Right.
And while not being on social media, it is really good for you to not see, you know, what's being said. But there are some consequences that happen for you being a public official and having your name out there and perhaps an opinion that is not aligned with someone that may do something purposely to harm you.
Well, that's, that's the price you pay for signing up.
Okay.
Hey, um, how, I have one more question. How would you approach a divided community?
Well, yeah, it's divided now. I suppose I just, you know, listen, you gotta listen to them because you want to be fair. And you gotta give them their time. And some ideas will be good, some won't. And you just write them down and you talk to the rest of your directors. What do you think? You know, I mean, that's, that's what the group does is, is everybody has the opinion and you share your ideas. And you come to a conclusion and you, you try to stick by it.
Thank you.
I think you know, your, your comment there, I think, you know, why that question keeps popping up. It has been a crazy couple of years, you know, not just here, but in lots of different places around.
Oh, I know, yeah.
So it's just one of those things. We're not trying to, to hammer away at that, you know, the, the, the hope is, is there was, as was said earlier, that by listening, the empathy coming together that people can kind of cool the temperature down and actually sit at a table, just agree or disagree and keep moving forward and finding solutions. So not trying to be negative on, on that. It just, it's been an interesting couple of years. So I think a lot of boards are probably dealing with that. So thank you for all your, your answers though.
I don't have any further questions. Do you? Director Powell, did you have any further questions?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Director Brown, any further questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Would you like to make any sort of closing comments right?
Uh, no, I just look forward to serving on the board. Did you vote me in?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next candidate is Ron Ryan. Good evening.
Good for last one.
Well, Mike might still show up, so.
Trying to steal my thunder.
All right. Would you like to give a introductory statement?
Well, yeah, after 32 years of living in Portland and sleeping in Newburgh, it's time to get back into my community. I've lived here since we moved from Bremerton. My dad got out of the Navy in 1953. Went to school in this building. My mother graduated from high school in this building. My wife and I are both 69 graduates of Newburgh High School. And all four of our kids went through Maple Rush, my fourth through sixth grade school and graduated from Newburgh High School. And now I have two grandkids starting there. So it's time to roll up my sleeves and help out. I know it's been a tough last couple of years and another, another hand on board will help.
All right, very good. Why do you want to serve on the Newburgh School District Board of Directors?
Well, I, I look at school districts. I saw something encouraging because I am on social media. Senator Tim Scott from South Carolina, where I have family, posted that South Carolina is now going to mandate personal finance class for seniors to graduate South Carolina. All of a sudden, we've gone, some places have gone from the idea of, well, let's get them ready for college and test. From what we used to be, let's get ready them, for them to go into the working field. If that's through college, I went, dropped out, went on to a good city career. Almost all, all my kids have gone to college. I have a son, daughter-in-law with two master's degrees. So college is valuable if you have a clue. I didn't have a clue. And now we see all these young people wanting forgiveness of their student loans because Starbucks is not able to pay their, their bills. And so we need to prioritize the ability of these young people to get out and actually live outside their parents' home from someone who has one son still living at home.
That's why you want it so badly.
He's fine there.
And what is the role of the school board?
Well, obviously, number one is the budget process. That's, that's the ugly thing. Because there are never enough dollars to go around. I worked for a public agency for almost 32 years. So there was always the, okay, we're going to cut this because it will hurt the taxpayers more. And so you, you see how budget dollars are, are getting spent and priorities need to be made better for these kids. We're here for the kids, not for the, not for the public. We're here for those kids in the school. And then policy, policy has been a stickler, as you well know, but policies need to be set. People need to be held, held accountable for their actions. You know, if kids misbehave in school, they should be taking their, do desserts, I guess you'd say, as same as anybody in the public position is. Admin, as a teacher, teachers aid, they have a responsibility. And then beyond those policies, just overseeing all these employees. Who was, was, you mentioned employee morale. That's a huge deal. You know, when people my enter their jobs, all of a sudden their morale is really, really high. And you can't be micromanaging from the top. Yes, there are decisions that need to be made from the top, but let the first grade teacher let the kids color. So it's a broad range of things. And of course, the public involvement and trying to communicate to the public what it is you're trying to do, which can be a stickler.
Thank you. Hey. Hi. If appointed, are you interested in running in the election, you know, the position in the spring of 2023?
If appointed, if you guys aren't sick of me by then, I would be okay with running again. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, my question to you, Ron, is what do you hope to accomplish as a member of the Newburgh School Board? Some, some goals you would bring to us. What's that look like to you?
Well, hopefully a calming factor in the whole deal. I'm the oldest guy in the room. I've been around for a day or two and I worked a lot of years as a soup, as a, in management with the city of Portland. So I've got skills and, and education that have come out of that, dealing with people. Matter of fact, at one point, personally supervising 32 employees. So I know how to work with people. I sometimes know how to put my foot down. But that comes with the reason for kids. So I, I would like to see the ship run a little bit smoother. I know you guys all would. And I, I just think that's the most important thing that I could offer.
Yeah, thank you very much.
How will you approach a divided community?
I don't think our community is any different from our nation. We have a divided nation. You know, we can, if you voted for X, you're a lowlife. And if you voted for Y, you're a lowlife and it can't be resolved. I will approach a divided community with the explanation of why I do what I do and why I think, why I think. Let me hear what you have to say in a respectful manner and we can have a good conversation. If it comes down to shouting and cursing, conversation is over. No elected officials should have to take that kind of abuse from anybody. If people want to respectfully, even loudly disagree with your, or put in comments that are that, okay, that's, that's fine. But when you start getting into rage and anger, that's time for the discussion to end. So I, I would approach it, you know, with my sleeves rolled up and we'll talk until we can't.
You mentioned you are, you are in social media and I'm, I'm going to ask that same question about being prepared for shots and rude comments and that will come your way and that people will say lies about you and your family and and how prepared are you to handle that kind of unfairness?
Well, to be a little bit humorous, there's an old term called spit lives off a battleship. I don't have a job. I'm retired. So you can't fire me. Sorry, Brian. You know, I mean, what are you going to do? Take away my birthday? It is what it is. I don't post much on, on Facebook. I like to stalk on Twitter and kind of tweak certain people. But about the only thing I post on Facebook is my new great-granddaughter. So it's it's just words. You know, I'm not hurt by words. Yeah, I know the liar from the graphic was not good, but I don't have a big footprint in this community much anymore.
Thank you.
Um, I, it, see, could you tell me if you have had a time where you had to handle an emotional
Um, I, it, see, could you tell me if you have had a time where you had to handle an emotional, um, confrontation?
Does my teenage daughter count?
Yes.
I successfully raised my daughter to, and got her married. No, uh, it was emotional. Uh, in the time that I worked as a supervisor, I had a group of guys that were the, uh, jailhouse lawyers. They were, I had the highest percentage of union stewards and everything in a public agency who could not be fired if they shot the president. And so, there were times, then we had some discussions, and my usual deal with me is the first thing I'm gonna do is fire a shot at me. I find, find self-deprecating humor is one of the first things to actually diffuse a situation or start diffusing it. And then again, when the other person starts laughing at you, you calm them down, and then you deal with it. And by the way, Scott never gave me a technical all the years that we played basketball.
My turn?
Yep.
Well, I would definitely say part of the strategic, strategic plan for next year, gotta be more humor. I appreciate that. You know, as we, uh, you said earlier, though, but, um, uh, I know you're, you're, you had kids in the district, grandkids. Could you go over that one more time? And as adding to that question, being a person who's been here a long time, seeing, uh, different transitions of our school district, times are different in two thousand twenty-two, though, than, than when you were, uh, you know, going through school here and your kids. Um, how, how can you bring your experience and adapt it to two thousand twenty-two?
Well, when I was a kid, of course, I was a farm kid, so I never missed school. I went my entire, well, in those days, three years of high school, never missed a day. No skip day, nothing. Yeah, it was weird. As my kids got in, uh, we go ninety-one, ninety-four, ninety-nine, and two thousand one. I started helping correct papers and being their editor, and I saw decline in writing skills, which was really, really unbelievable. The oldest son started out, and he was formal writing. And by the time that we got to the younger kids, it was speak writing. They wrote the way they speak. We learned formal English in, in high school. The kids don't love school anymore. Why is that? Is it because it interrupts with their social media or their game time? Why? We have to find a way to get kids to engage back at school again. And once we do that, enrollment should start going up again.
Okay, I know.
Our, our class here was a hundred and ninety-six in nineteen sixty-nine Newburgh High School. The town at that time was about forty-eight hundred people. So if you extrapolate that to the twenty-five thousand we have now, we should have a lot more. We should have eight hundred in our class. But yet you look at Portland. My roommate in college graduated from Grant High School. They held their graduation in the Memorial Coliseum because they had eight hundred kids. Now that school's not much bigger than Newburgh. So school enrollment is tricky.
We don't have any additional questions?
I don't have another, another question. And I am, did you go?
I'm also good. Thank you very much, Ron.
All right.
Any closing thoughts?
No, I think I hit most of it. Uh, you know, I have, uh, sister-in-law, but all three of their kids didn't graduate from school, not, not from here. But it was, neither did they. They were Newburgh classes seventy-seven. So by that time already, you were seeing the, part of it was drugs that started in our, in our communities. And, uh, it's not new. My oldest son is a, as a sheriff's deputy in a bigger city. And it's the same old names with the same old drugs. Um, we have to get our kids to engage again. That's, that's to me a, a big thing. Uh, I know my kids are always giving me a bad time about, get off your phone and engage with us. So, we've got to find a way.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, no, Mike?
He has internet issues tonight. He's out in the country, so.
Oh, that's unfortunate.
Yeah.
The board could obviously take whatever action it wishes to take, or it could rely solely upon his response and make a decision. Or you could choose.
Okay.
Okay.
Unfortunately. We could also take, right?
Yes, you could. You could. You could even act on position three, table of questions.
What do you folks think about that?
I missed some of that. I was a little bit low on the.
So, um, one of our three candidates for Zone Two is having internet trouble, so he can't connect. He was actually on earlier, but apparently he's having connection issues. Um, we could vote on the folks we have tonight, or we could table that seat until the next meeting?
I, I think that it's unfortunate that, um, candidate was not able to make it, uh, to the meeting. I think it's very, uh, but as we are going into the summer and, uh, moving forward, we have a board retreat. I, it would be my preference for us to look at the candidates that were able to be here and participate in the process. Um, and, and also considering the written, um, information from the candidate who was not here and try to, uh, complete the process of adding to our board.
Surprised I had my mic off. I apologize. Um, uh, Acting Chair Shannon, the other thing I would bring to the board's attention is this is your sole board meeting for, um, July. Your next board meeting won't be until early August. I mean, that second Tuesday in August.
But that second August is before the, the board retreat, so we could still.
I just wanted to make sure everyone knew that you didn't have another one in two weeks. Okay?
I'll just go around the room. Dave, what do you think?
Well, we, the last time we went through this process, um, it, it was, it was drawn out for, we don't need to go into the reasons why it was drawn out. And, uh, you know, I think at this point in time, we need to, to fill the seats and move forward. We talked about some, uh, board members training, uh, well before the next board meeting. And, uh, you know, moving forward, there's so much to work on, uh, moving forward. As all of our candidates said tonight, you know, there's a lot to work on. And, uh, there's a lot of conversations and a lot of listening to, to take place. Um, so I would agree with, uh, uh, Director Raquel, that, uh, we should vote tonight and, and move forward.
Renee, what do you think?
Yes, um, I would agree. It's, um, we had the applications to read, um, and to go through, so it's not like we, he wasn't heard. Um, and I think, I think we need to make a decision tonight.
Okay, well, I'll defer to the consensus of the group. Um, in that case, uh, I'll entertain a motion as to appointments.
One at a time.
For Zone Two.
For Zone Two? Just pick a zone. I just, a mo, a, a conjoined motion would be right, challenge.
Problem. Okay. So are there any nominations, uh, for who folks would like to be the appointee for Zone Two?
So that was, that was our, I mean, I'm not trying to, that was our first ones we had tonight, right?
Right.
Okay.
I would appoint, um, Shelley.
Okay, is that a motion? Is that a motion, Renee?
Oh, yes.
Okay, it's been moved to, uh, to appoint Shelley Cole. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to say, I think we had, you know, two strong candidates, uh, in person, and appreciate all three. You know, bring that up, but that's my comment.
I will, um, say that I really liked, um, uh, something that, uh, Shelley said really touched me about her experience, uh, and, you know, and how extracurricular, extracurricular activities are so important. And then wrapping back to what others said, that we need to engage our kids back. So I think that having someone who has that drive and that, uh, you know, that passion to help us, and we've heard from others, uh, in our district who have come out to seek board support for their kids', um, activities that actually help them engage in school. So I, I will, uh, I, I will support that motion.
Okay, uh, I, I, I'll just say, I thought, uh, both of the folks we got to hear from tonight for Zone Two were, were excellent. Uh, it's a classic problem of two, two really good candidates in one spot. So, uh, that's unfortunate, but I want to thank everyone who applied. And I'm sorry we couldn't hear from Mike. That's unfortunate. But thank you to all three for applying. Um, and is there any further discussion? If not, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of appointing Shelley Cole as the Zone Two representative of the board, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, we are on to Zone Three. Is there a motion for the Zone Three appointment?
So I, I, I will move for, uh, the appointment of, uh, Ron Riley for position three, or position for Zone Three, um, on the school board.
Is there a second?
I will, I will second that.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded to appoint Ron Riley, uh, to the Zone Three representative for the Newburgh School Board. Uh, is there any discussion?
Since I made the motion, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about it. I, I like, uh, both of you guys, that same problem, really great candidates wanting to serve. I appreciate that. I think it's so important and so good that you guys want to step up, and I extend that to all, uh, who applied. Uh, I can, uh, and it's gonna sound kind of silly, but I like the humor. And, you know, having that levity and, uh, that could bring that, you know, uh, perspective of trying to see, um, a little bit of the fun in, in this, uh, serving, uh, position. So I, I, I look forward to that and, uh, just also your, uh, uh, his, uh, presence here in the community. Also have that, but it's just, um, I, I thought that his, uh, his engagement, again, with that passion of bringing interest back to kids, that resonates with me. And so I'm, that's why I'm watching.
Yeah, I would say I appreciate both candidates also, you know, a lot of experience in our, our, our town. Or, uh, it's exciting to see people wanting to, to, um, you know, to, to come back and give back after they've lived for a long time. And it's, it's, I think it just shows with all of our candidates tonight, that we have people that, that, uh, want to get engaged back with our, um, our schools and help, help the, uh, enrollment, help the budget, help everything. To, you know, to get back to having a, a great school district. So I appreciate, uh, you know, both of these gentlemen, uh, applying.
Yes, and I also want to just really thank for everybody's, um, interest in applying and taking that time. And, um, yeah, with Ron, I really just like to, um, I think everybody had the passion and everything, but just some of the things that he says about, you know, bringing, you know, why, bringing that love of education back into our kids, and, you know, why are they leaving? And just, um, you know, getting our kids back into school and, and, and loving school. So, and I, I also appreciate, uh, humor. I always think humor is really, um, important. And, um, just, um, I don't know, I'm tired. But yes, anyway, that's right. I appreciate it, everybody. Thanks.
All right. Uh, I also appreciate both candidates. Um, and, you know, it would have, I, I could see us going with either, uh, and have it be a interesting and useful thing. Um, but we have to pick somebody, so. Uh, I guess unless there is any further discussion, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Uh, all those in favor of appointing Ron Riley to the Zone Three, uh, seat on the Newburgh School Board, raise your hand. Motion passes unanimously.
And I think Dave was frozen, so we didn't see his hands, so.
Perfect. Lisa, I believe they joined the board immediately, correct?
As soon as you give them the oath of office, which is in your packet.
All right. Yeah. You are in for a rude surprise. Can we pull a? Uh, we'll take a two-minute break to get our new members some chairs and set up here.
Scotty? Mike, you're not giving me a technical was the key phrase. I know, I thought you'd mentioned emotional time was what Dave.
It's Newburgh. All right. Oh, Dave's gone now. They took two minutes. Okay. I said two minutes. We'll give him two minutes.
It's eleven fifteen there.
All right. So, uh, we will now do the swearing in of our new board members. Uh, so, um, I will go ahead and give the oath, and please repeat after me, Shelley and Ron. Oh, for.
I think so.
Okay.
That's how it looks like.
Right?
Yeah, because first one's Zone Two.
Okay, uh, I say your name.
I, Shelley Cole.
Do solemnly swear, or solemnly affirm.
Do solemn, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
And the policies of the Newburgh School District.
And the policies of the Newburgh School District.
During my term of office, I will honestly and impartially discharge the duties of my office.
During my term, I will honestly and impartially discharge the duties of the office.
Of school board member to the best of my ability.
A school board member to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Ray, Ron?
Yeah.
I say your name.
I, Ron Riley.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
And the policies of the Newburgh School District.
And the policies of the Newburgh School District.
During my term, I will honestly and impartially discharge the duties of the office.
During my term, I will honestly and impartially discharge the duties of the office.
Of school board member to the best of my ability.
A school board member to the best of. A school board member to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. We're a seven-member board again.
Congratulations, you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, on to new business. Um, our first duty is to elect a chairperson for the next, um, session. I'll just briefly, say what the process is. I will open the floor to nominations. Members are then free to nominate, uh, anyone they would like. Once, uh, nominations do not need to be seconded. Once, uh, we have all the nominations in, we will close the nomination period and then we will then go to a vote. And we will vote on the basis of, um, order in which they were nominated. Anyone have any questions on that? Okay, in that case, I will now open the floor to nominations.
I nominate, um, Dave Brown to be our chairperson for one more year.
Are there any additional nominations? In that case, I will close the nominations. Uh, Dave has been nominated to be chair, uh, for the next year. All those in favor of electing Dave Brown as chairperson for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, uh, raise your hand. Passes unanimously. Uh, same drill, but for vice chair. Uh, so I will now open the floor for vice chairperson nominations.
I would like to nominate, uh, Director Shannon, uh, to, to continue one more year as vice chair.
Are there any other nominations? Please. Okay. Uh, nominations are now closed. Uh, all those in favor of electing Brian Shannon, vice chairperson for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, uh, raise your hand. Passes unanimously. We're off to a great start. All right.
You guys have just gotten broken in.
All right, Dr. Phillips, uh, you're up for resolution twenty-two-two-dash-one authorizing deposits and withdrawals of funds.
Yeah, I have, uh, three resolutions and then a designated signatories. Uh, the first resolution is twenty-two oh-one and it's, um, this is something we have to do every year and so it's standard, but it's to, this is to approve the types of transactions that we will do. Like I said, it's, it's common. More, more detail if you'd like, but it's, it's something we do every year, common.
So I move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors adopt resolution twenty-two-one dash zero-one, a resolution authorizing deposit withdrawal and borrowing of funds by title only.
Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? In that case, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the, uh, motion to author, um, to adopt resolution twenty-two-two-dash-oh-one.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, when I made my motion, I read it wrong because it was wrong.
That's okay. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Passes unanimously.
Okay, the next one, uh, twenty-two-two-oh-two is, uh, motion that we, um, it's, it's approving all the institution that we, institutions that we bank. They're, they're on that sheet. Well, Wells Fargo, US Bank, Science Bank, Piper Jeffrey and Columbia Bank.
Is anything changing this year versus what we used last year? Excellent. In that case, uh, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Oh.
You wanted to read.
Yeah, you have to read, you have to say the motion.
I guess I come out of a loser agency. I move that resolution twenty-two-two-dash-oh-two authorizing deposits, withdrawals and fund be adopted.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? In that case, I will call for a vote. Uh, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-two-two-oh-two, uh, raise your hand. Passes unanimously.
Okay, twenty-two-oh-three, it details, um, the district officers that are, um, uh, responsible, uh, designees. And so if you'll notice, in the description of twenty-two, twenty-three or twenty-two-oh-three, my name's on there several times and Nikki Fowler's on there. Nikki Fowler has resigned, but we are keeping her on, uh, until we get her replacement. And so, um, as soon as we have a replacement, then the replacement's name will replace Nikki's name and we'll, we'll bring it to the board again. But for the time being, being, we need her to help us bridge that gap. And then it's also the, uh, uh, various law firms, including Lisa Freely, um, uh, Tyler Smith, um, Hungerford, et cetera, and also our, um, auditing firm, Polly Rogers. And so it's, uh,
Uh, I would entertain a motion. I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors adopt resolution twenty-two-two-dash-oh-three, a resolution establishing designated school district appointments, financial auditors and legal counsel by title only.
I'll second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? In that case, I will call for a vote. Uh, all those in favor of adopting resolution twenty-two-two-dash-oh-three, uh, please vote yes by raising your hand. Passes unanimously.
And the last one I have is to, uh, uh, designate signatories. And so if you see on the first sheet, um, there's some names crossed out, like Superintendent Morlock, Derek Brown, Nef, et cetera. The next page shows the people that are still on staff, myself, Greg, Karen, Ellen, Nikki. Once again, Nikki's on there until she's not, till we have her replacement. Um, so this is just kind of with the turnover, it's just cleaning up our lists.
Uh, I would entertain a motion. I'll move that the Newburgh School District Board of Directors approve and designate the depository signatures for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three as listed.
I second.
I guess.
Uh, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the, uh, designating the depository signatures for fiscal year twenty-two-dash-twenty-three as listed, please vote yes by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously. All right, uh, and now Lisa, I'll turn it over to you for the board complaint item.
Okay, so, um, this is a little bit of a lengthy process, but we will try and move through it as expeditiously as possible. Um, Tyler and I have been working on these, so, uh, he gave me some feedback even today, so I've incorporated them. It's not always surprising that sometimes you can put two minds in the same thing and sometimes we have some differences of opinion. I'm gonna kind of talk a little bit about those when we get to them. We have a lot of commonality in some of our responses. Um, I've incorporated Tyler, the stuff that you sent me, uh, earlier today. If I, um, if I get it wrong, because it is possible that I have, you know, trying to do this fairly quickly, um, please just flag me and then let's have the conversation.
Sure. Would we, would it be wise that we start with a little bit of an explanation to them about the recent OGET um, opinion and how that applies to these and why we're doing this in open meeting?
Yeah, so I think that's a, I think that's a good point. So there, there is a lot of comfort, you know, there's that section of the statute that talks about, um, executive sessions and there, it talks about complaints and about public officials. And so there has been a significant amount of debate about whether or not, um, given the statute as it's written in the executive session law, you are public officials. Okay, and, um, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission goes on for about eight pages, um, talking about the various different statutes and where a public official occurs and the words that go into the statute with it that modify or are connected to that definition of public official. So when you get to the part of the executive session law, it is connected to employment, the ability to discipline, uh, et cetera. So then the question arises, um, given that you are not employed, um, the question then becomes whether or not there is a discipline component um, to school boards, which the Oregon Government Ethics Commission recommends that we look at chapter ORS three-three-two to determine whether there is some specific authority or some other, they do reference that there could be some other statutory reference, but when you look at the education statutes, and there are a lot of them, um, the board's authority almost, um, solely, not completely, but ninety percent of the board's authority resides in chapter three-three-two. Well, when you read that, there is nothing that speaks to the authority to discipline board members. Right? There's all sorts of weird, and I do mean weird. If you ever want to go see what all your, um, authority is, it's kind of an odd little, uh, list of things, okay? Um, but in there, it doesn't speak specifically to the ability to discipline, which has been, um, kind of the bane of my existence for thirty-plus years in advising school districts because, and school boards. Because you have a school board member who may engage in a behavior or an activity that is not something that you are happy about. So then what do you do with that person, right? I mean, and in most cases, as Tyler and I had this conversation over the last week or so, the conversation is about censure, okay? I mean, that is how we communicate disapproval with board members about their activities. But then there's this huge conversation, is censure really discipline, right? I mean, I, I, I think we could both argue it multiple different ways. I think for me, when I talk about censure with school boards, I talk about it as a way for us to express disapproval. I talk about it as a way for us to create space between us legally and that other board member's decision or actions and a statement that it is not something that the board supports to try and reduce and limit liability. But you don't have the option to like fire a board member, right? I mean, some of you know that the only way you get fired is to survive a recall campaign, right, or election.
To not survive.
Right, right. I mean, you have to, you have to be recalled in order to be fired. So as we went through this, um, given that the, and there is at least some other, um, what we as lawyers would say is dicta, right? There's, it's not something that is an actual, uh, red letter ruling, but there's at least a comment in another school board case out of Jervis where they talked about that executive sessions should not be focused on board relationships or board conduct and behaviors. The one that Tyler and I read was one that, uh, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission issued surprisingly enough at the end of June, right? Just at the end of June. And it was for an attorney who was representing a school district down in Lang County, right? So, um, as a result of that conversation, we are doing this meeting in public rather than in an executive session, because it seems to us that that is probably the cleanest and the most conservative approach to take in interpreting the law and not creating any risk of liability for you as board members, since that liability attributes to you individually and personally, right? And as you, as, as some of you are experiencing, as you deal with your, um, your current process with the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, right? We don't want to add to that. And it seemed like a reasonable approach for us to.
We had, just to add to that, we had, or I had submitted, um, a request for an ethics opinion on that. And the person that writes them wrote me back and said, by the way, you're not the only one. There's one coming out in just a couple of days. I'll send it to you when we publish it. And so we got that. You're not the only ones that are dealing with these kinds of issues in this state, in this climate. But, um, I think that the important thing to note is that, as Lisa was just saying, that's why we're doing this in open session rather than the executive session, because you don't have, it's our interpretation and sort of goes with what, um, Oregon Government Ethics Commission said, we don't really have the ability to discipline, not that we know of or that we are aware of. Um, so therefore, that turns these complaints into, what do you do with them when they're against a school board member? Basically, they're learning opportunities and not much more unless you decided you wanted to make a, a resolution of censure, a statement, a, um, you know, a, a statement that you disapprove of something. Or, or that you have learned a lesson or that you've, something like that. So, it, it, that's why we go through them pretty quickly and just by the way the operation of the law works.
So, I mean, I think it's important for, because, because some of the questions have come up. I mean, if this was a complaint about an employee, the employee would retain control over whether that was an executive session or a public session. It definitely is not as clean and as clear-cut for you as an elected official under the definition of a public official. And for those of you who really need something to help put you to sleep at night, um, if you would like me to, I can forward you the decision and you can read the whole conversation all the way back to the Oregon Constitution about what constitutes a public official and the various places it comes up. But, um, it, it is all about, um, the legal context of that term, which is how we got here.
I think that on all of these, you all still, the board still has the normal power it has to, for instance, have an investigation or gather more information or table it or make a decision. You know, the decision to, you know, do X or a decision to dismiss for a reason why. You have all those same options you would have with any employee or staff, discipline, whatever. It's just the substance or the remedy is not all that impactful or full of teeth. People like to say it doesn't have a lot much teeth.
Okay, so if there are no questions, I'm gonna literally, you should have a copy of the complaint in your packet. I am literally going to go through these one at a time because we have different recommendations for each of them as we, you will see though, that in some cases, um, the facts are similar in the complaint. It is a different policy that has been identified. Um, so in some cases, you'll see that our recommendations will have a, have a theme or a consistency to them as we move, that as those facts move potentially to different policies. Okay, um, in, uh, the very first one, which is, um, violation one A, which talks about an August twenty-fourth, a back executive session, um, meeting four members, Brown, Shannon, Dehart, Powell. This is where it's alleged that there was, uh, discussion regarding the need for attorney services and that as a result of that, um, you had a meeting that was inappropriate. Um, my recommendation and Tyler's in this one is to hold this issue in abeyance, given that this issue is currently in the middle of litigation, right? The whole conversation about how did that hiring occur and the enacting of that happen um, falls directly within this one A and we would prefer for us to get a resolution to that before we resolve this complaint. Hey. One B, this is one where I'm going to present to you that we have two, um, differing concepts that we want you to think about. Um, Tyler would start with the idea, this one relates to the executive, um, meeting that occurred on November ninth that, um, is allegedly been coordinated by members in an effort to discipline and remove Dr. Morlock um, from his position. Um, Tyler would propose that you dismiss this complaint because he believes that the, the facts do not support that this occurred. I would recommend that this be held in advance, um, because you're gonna laugh, Raquel. Board member, Pavar Dino.
DeBrito.
DeBrito. I forgot the DeBrito. Uh, the amended filing for the complaint that was filed on Friday last week, attempts to move this issue back into the complaint as you asked, um, for us to contemplate. Now, I don't want to go into any details, but the, in, in terms of, because I, I'm not going to talk about what the advice was, but the conversation you asked us was, could um, the complaint be amended to incorporate the Joe Morlock firing and try to bootstrap it into a, back into the prior complaint. And we're still dealing with that issue in front of the judge. And so, um, I would just say, because this is still a live issue, at least for the, this week, but, but. Tyler also has a point that, you know, you guys contend that this didn't happen.
Well.
That, that meeting would not, as a result of the meeting not occurring, that you could dismiss the complaint as being unfounded.
And, and my contention here, my point is that it would not violate policy BBAA. For um Chair Shan- or Chair Brown and Chair Shannon to go and present. Uh, potential, you know, complaint that's been filed or might be dealt with. To a staff person, particularly the superintendent who's within their role, that wouldn't be a policy violation of BBAA. So no matter.
This is one B, Tyler, we're not down to that one yet.
I'm on, I'm on one B.
Okay, it just talks about coordinating an effort to discipline and remove from a position, it doesn't, okay, go ahead.
Right, that would not, even if proven true, would not be a violation of BBAA, so that's why I'd say it can be dismissed as unfounded.
So, in that appeals that was going to, they had a right for a response on the first or something like that. They actually trying to piggyback this.
They have refiled with this issue as part of that refiling under the original facts. That they had in place, which makes no sense.
Was that, was that one of the contentions that got dismissed by the judge previously?
Yeah, um, again, um, I want to be very careful because I don't want to, uh, we are in public session and I don't want to. Disclose, you know.
But that was a rule.
Right, but, but in this particular instance, what, what the judge gave them leave to do was to amend their complaint. Because as the complaint was written, it did not create an actionable cause of action. It, it didn't create a cause of action that was viable under the statute. So he gave them cause to re, allowed them, give them permission to refile and try to make it actionable. By, by putting it back into the, but, but that was not ever intended from our perspective to. Kind of bootstrap that argument.
So that's the same thing I'm asserting here. For instance, as an example, if one of you board members went to Shiloh and said, I propose that we have lobster for lunch. Every day at school. You know, is that a possibility? Would you like that idea if it comes up in a meeting next week? And Shiloh said, sure, that would be great, or no, I don't like that idea, that is not a violation of policy BBAA. And that's what they're asserting here.
Okay. So, hold on, one A.
So, so are they, they're not making a quorum claim? Is that, is that the difference between these two things? Tyler is the first one, a quorum claim. And the second one is, some people went and talked to Joe Morlock and it wasn't for of the board.
Right.
Yeah, so that's not a violation, okay, yeah, I, I move that we dismiss it. Or.
So let's take one A, let's take one A first. Um, which would be to hold it in advance, our recommendation would be to hold that in advance. Would the board, um, please take action on whether or not they think that's.
Need a motion for that?
Well, I, I would at least like to see a consensus and some, some guidance from the board, whether that's. Doesn't necessarily need to be, although I think, uh, Chair Shannon, we have had some motions in the past. On some of these, when you want to, but in this one, given that it's just holding in advance, I don't know that we need an actual motion, I would like to see some consensus, so.
I think it makes sense to hold something that is. Under existing current litigation in advance until that gets ruled on.
Then one B, what about everybody, uh, Renee, I'm sorry, Board Member Powell, Board Member Brown, what do you guys think?
Okay, I agree with um, holding one A and dismissing one B.
Okay.
That's fine by me.
Okay.
So in that case, I should move to dismiss violation one B?
Yeah.
I move to dismiss violation one B.
My second.
Is there any discussion?
No.
In that case, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of dismissing violation one B, raise your hand. Dave's frozen. We have to hold our hands still. Hey, Dave, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Please, I or Nate?
Yeah, net, yes, I, I agree.
All right, it's unanimous.
So let's move on to two A and two B. Um, this is tied to a policy that requires the board members to act, board members who act in the name of the board. To, that, that power comes from a specific motion that authorizes action. And this goes to the meeting that um, is alleged to have occurred on November fourth. Between Director Dehart and um Chair Brown with Joe Morlock um requesting his resignation. Um, and then two B is um tied to a meeting, alleged meeting that occurred on November twelfth. Between Chair Brown and um Dr. Derek Brown to see whether or not, and. He was interested in the interim position and offer employment. When you look at the policy, I think a lot of this turns on whether or not. Um, the individual board member and how they presented that conversation, right? If, um, it would not be unusual for a board chair to potentially identify whether or not. Um, there was someone who had interest in something before bringing it back to the board. It also would not necessarily be completely unheard of for a board member. It wouldn't be the way I would necessarily recommend the conversation take place, but it wouldn't be completely unheard of in my years of experience for a board member to walk into a superintendent. And say, I'm not happy with how you're doing the job, and if this doesn't resolve itself, I'm going to go back to the board and have a conversation, right? So, um, as you look through this, um. You can obviously direct us to go talk to Board Member Dehart and Chair Brown and ask them what they said. Um, if you'd like to, um, or we can um. Take a, a perspective that this would not necessarily be seen as unusual or. Out of the norm if they were conversations that occurred, um, especially the one between Chair Brown and. Dr. Brown, right, Derek, um, to see if there was someone of interest, so. You know, our recommendation isn't necessarily to find a violation here on this. Um, but we could, if you wanted us to go back and have a conversation, ask those board members what they actually said and how they characterized it. Um, it would be hard for us to seek out Dr. Brown and Dr. Morlock to ask them how it was presented, we'd have to go looking for those individuals. Um, so, I, we don't have a really solid recommendation here for you, we've given you some ideas as to how you could move forward.
So.
But it sounds like you're saying they're not legal violations of our policy.
Yeah, so your, your policy says it is that, um. Chair, Chair Shannon, you could not go in to Dr. Phillips's office and say, under your policy, you could not say. As, um, as a representative of the Newburgh School Board, I'm here to ask for your resignation, right? You couldn't do that unless the board had taken action. To grant you that authority to have that conversation, because as we've talked about, individual board, individually, you have no, you have no authority. Right? The only way you get power is by a vote of the majority of your board. So it's all going to turn on that conversation in terms of how it was presented. So we could ask that question, or you could say that there aren't necessarily any facts, I mean, there's some allegations, but there isn't anything. That, it, it's not like they're reporting to us what the conversation was.
Right, there's no evidence.
There, you know, in that particular piece, and you could find it as lacking for that purpose as well.
This is one, recommendations differed, so I wanted to uh jump in here before we got too far into this one. Uh, my recommendation was a dismissal of both two A and two B as unfounded. And the reason being is that board members generally and potentially here are, would have been prohibited. From discussing actions or plans in advance with the majority of the board as they suggest in their question or their allegation should have been done. And it's that, that, the conclusion that it's not a violation of anything. For a board member to present a potential idea or potential action item to a staff member in, in advance. Of a formal motion or some agenda item being brought up at a future meeting. So therefore, it wouldn't be, it's sort of the same logic as one B was. It wouldn't be a violation because it's not something that's prohibited from happening.
You need separate motions for the two violations?
Um. It would be easier.
Okay, I, I move that we dismiss violation two A.
My second.
Motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? In that case, I'll call for the vote, all in favor of dismissing violation two A, please vote yes by raising your hand. Passes unanimously, I move that we dismiss violation two B.
I'll second.
The motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? In that case, I will call for the vote, all those in favor of dismissing violation two B, please vote yes by raising your hand. Motion passes unanimously.
So violation three speaks to, um, and it goes back to the policy that talks about legal opinions and how those are obtained. And, um, it talks about, um, the allegations are that four board members reached out to Tyler Smith for legal counsel. Before receiving a majority of the board, this is clearly in line with the litigation that is currently pending. We would recommend that you hold it in advance until we get that resolved.
Everyone okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. Um, four, this one speaks to the fact that board members, um. What the policy says is that when you receive a complaint, your job is to refer it back to the administration or to refer the patron. To the complaint process, not necessarily for you to carry that complaint individually as board members. Um, to a board meeting or some other um venue. And, um, the allegations are that, uh, board members have repeatedly failed to direct complaints through the appropriate complaint process. And they give you one example, um, which is the uh action to remove the Black Lives Matter and the pride flags with any record of complaints. So now, um, the first thing I think is important for us to point out. Is that there really is no obligation either under statute or policy for there to have been a complaint. For you to have to, to, to justify or to anchor a change in policy, right? Um, so I think that the fact that there wasn't a complaint. Um, would not prohibit you from making a change to policy on a go-forward basis, right? Complaints often drive change, but they are not necessarily required for change. The second thing, um, I, we would make a recommendation here is that, um. These are complicated. Issues, you are public officials, you are in the community, you grocery shop, you go to the barber, you go get your hair done. And everyone's got an opinion and everyone wants to talk to you, and everyone expects you to fix and solve their problems. I have lived this dream for thirty years as I listen to board members talk about their life. Um, which makes me question, you know, the whole idea, you really want to do this, right? Um, but anyway, um, the, the challenge, I think, and you've got a very new board, you've got a new administrator. I, I think it is a challenge for you to figure out, how do you take that information and incorporate it? Into your leadership and decision-making. Um, so that it ends up not coming across as a complaint. But it's something that may inform your decision-making, right? Um, and to balance that with your obligations under policy for people to follow the proper. The proper um procedure and to avoid potential public meetings types, well, you know. Um, violations, so I, I don't see anything that specifically would speak to me in these facts as alleged. That there is a violation, but, uh, but I do believe that there is definitely, um. It would be probably beneficial for you as a board, I mean, you've got a retreat coming up, but for you as a board and your administrators. Um, specifically Dr. Phillips, to have a conversation about how, how do you guys move forward? Um, managing all the feedback you get, both critical and positive. So that it ends up being used in a, in a way that is not perceived as, as complaints. Because if there are complaints, people need to go someplace else to manage that, right? They need to file that complaint. So that Dr. Phillips has an opportunity to try and solve that problem. But that doesn't mean that that doesn't inform your opinion in some way, so how do you manage that and how do you move forward? So my recommendation is you do that, that you have that conversation and you learn from each other and you give yourself some examples. And you actually walk through some practical ones to figure out how do you make it work? And then recognize that this complaint really is, um, is not founded.
Uh, I move that we dismiss violation four.
Second.
All right, again, the action, uh, motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? All right, in that case, uh, I will call for the vote, all those in favor of dismissing violation four, raise your hand to, vote I. Passes unanimously.
Okay, let's move on to five, um, this one again goes back, um. To the conversation about the contracts having to be approved by the board. And that the contract, um, that there were legal services provided, um, prior to the board acting on a contract. Um, and I, I would start with the first thing is that we are still, this is, this is still.
Yeah.
Connected to some of that litigation that we've got going and, and I think there's some value in waiting for the judge to tell us. Because you did take a vote in November under that statute, which could in fact have ratified. Depending on the findings that the judge makes, that the motion you made, Brian, uh. Board Member Shannon in November to, um, ratify the contract between the district and. Tyler Smith could in fact go all the way back. To the beginning of August, if, as long as we've done that process legally, right? And that would in fact then basically moot out this complaint. But we don't know that we, that we've gotten that, we haven't been blessed to say that we've done that legally yet, so I would hold this in advance. Uh, until we get there. What do you guys think?
I'm, I'm in agreement, sounds good.
I'm fine to do that, like, it's, it rubs me the wrong way that I know that I didn't enter into any service contract with Tyler, so that's.
They are alleged, yeah, they are alleged.
But we'll keep it for the, the litigation to resolve, that's fine.
And by the way, I want to make it very clear as we're having this conversation, that none of this is necessarily speaking. We, we are not necessarily debating the facts for some of these, I'm looking at this from a legal perspective. Um, in terms of how to move forward. Um, so on, um. Violation six, it is focused on the policy related to board member standards of conduct. Um, which requires following the chain of command and referring complaints to the proper administration. Um, this is one where they use the example of having repeatedly failed to direct complaints, it's very, it is the exact same facts. Um, my advice to you is the same, right? It is, it is to engage in those conversations. But that the complaint itself does not require a complaint in order for, I mean. You don't, you're not required to have a complaint to make a change or go forward, you, you are required, if you get a complaint. To follow the complaint process, but I think there's always going to be a dispute, you know, an interpretational dispute. About whether or not the concerns you hear and that you bring to the conversation, are they complaints, are they informing your thinking? And that's why I think that conversation, I think, would be important.
Yeah, you, you get to have that conversation at the, at the goal setting, whether an anonymous complaint has to be. You know, is nothing unless it's in writing, I mean, there's a distinction between a written complaint using the district's form. And somebody in your ear saying, this is bad, you know, this is a bad idea.
Uh, I move we dismiss violation six.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded, everyone's getting the action, I love it, uh, is there any discussion? If, if not, I will call for the vote, all those in favor of dismissing violation six, please vote yes by raising your. Passes unanimously.
Okay, seven A, um, this speaks to an executive session on August twenty fourth where there was a discussion of the need for services. Um, this too would fall under our recommendation to hold it in advance. Um, pending the outcome of the litigation surrounding that meeting and any other number of meetings or not meetings that we had. That resulted in the engagement of Tyler Smith. What do you guys think? Anyone want to take action or are you willing to kind of hold it for a little while longer?
Hold it.
I'm holding.
Okay, seven B, there is conversation about November ninth. And board members coordinating an effort to discipline and remove Dr. Morlock and that there, that that was a, a meeting. Outside. Of the legal parameters of the public meetings law.
And that's just a repetition of one B, right?
Yes, I would encourage you to hold it in advance, Tyler would tell you to dismiss.
We dismissed one B, right?
I know.
I moved to dismiss ten B.
Yep.
Seven B.
Seven B?
Seven B, we're not.
Seven.
I told you, there's some, there's some repetition in some of the facts.
You know, my creative writing teacher used to say, repetition is not developed. Good advice.
So you have a motion, I think you have a second.
Yes, sorry, all those in favor of dismissing violation seven B, raise your hand to vote yes. Passes unanimously.
Violation eight talks about. Board members are expected to write, to expect it to respect the right of the public to attend and observe meetings. And this basically says that there was a meeting opened by Vice Chair Shannon. Prior to August twenty fourth, and this relates. Adhering to the public meetings regulations, notification twenty-four hours in advance, printing of materials, and the failure to provide a link. So the first thing I would tell you is, both state law and policy. Recognize there is the ability to add things to your agenda with less than twenty-four hours notice, you can add it. At the day of the meeting, right? So the failure to provide twenty-four hours notice is not a violation of policy or of statute. The other thing is, the district does have a practice of how it provides access to materials and links. And it's not the board member's responsibility to do that, the district staff do take care of that and post those materials. And when something, there is a recognition. That because you can add things at the last minute, the documents may come in at the last minute, right? And while that's not necessarily best practice, it is something that is contemplated both under statute and law. And so this would be an unfounded complaint.
I move to dismiss violation eight, oh, sorry, when, you want to talk about it first?
No, you can.
I move to dismiss violation eight.
I second it.
Has been moved and seconded to dismiss violation eight, is there any discussion? In that case, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of dismissing violation eight, please raise your hand, please vote yes by raising your hand. Passed unanimously.
Nine, this goes back to. A resolution, all the way back to August tenth. And, and I have to confess, I was not as deeply involved in your board meetings in August as I am currently. But my recollection is that there was some conversation about removing the policy about Black Lives Matter. And a resolution to direct Dr. Morlock to take cer- certain actions. And I don't know exactly where that all falls into this conversation. But in most cases, none of those went anywhere, one was rescinded, one was tabled. And so as I look at this, and, and then you created a secondary process that developed a completely separate policy.
Yeah.
Which ultimately became the policy that was adopted that is currently being heard.
Well, what she's speaking to here is that we amended the motion the night we passed it, which you're allowed to amend motions. That's kind of what we do. So I move to dismiss violation nine with contempt.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in, in favor of dismissing violation nine, please raise your hand to vote I.
Almost halfway.
Okay, ten also speaks to the August twenty fourth, the need for hiring attorneys. And that it constituted an action, a, a meeting which was inappropriate. And, and this one, I would again make a recommendation that you wait and hold this in advance. Pending the outcome of that litigation.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
I feel like we've had this conversation, alright.
And, and ten B would fit into the same category where Tyler and I have just differences of opinion. But given what you've done with the other two, and I'm, I recognize that it is a practice, which means that it, we don't always end up in the same place in our recommendations.
I move we dismiss violation ten B.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to dismiss violation ten B, is there any discussion? Not, please vote yes by raising your hand. Passes unanimously.
Alright.
Eleven's the not giving notice of the public meeting again. That one we recommended.
I will say, I actually am really glad we're doing this in public because it lets people see the ridiculousness of some of what we've been dealing with. In private up to now, so that's kind of nice, I like this.
Violation eleven talks about the August twenty fourth meeting and, and by the way, these are all tied to different policies, right? Because we have a lot of policies that govern. How we, how we have, we have board role policies, we have board authority policies, we have board. Meeting policies, we have policies on agendas, so that's why you see some of the same facts. Appearing in regards to subsequent violations, right?
I have a question now that you brought up that, that, just for curiosity, how many hours of attorney fees? Have, has it been spent on reviewing this?
Well, there's a reason that I did it and Tyler didn't. Which is, you pay a flat fee for me, right? I don't bill my time hourly, so I do a lot of the. The paperwork, I then call and have a conversation with, to try and create official, legal efficiencies.
But, I, I appreciate that, but as I am sure that.
I don't know.
You, you, you don't even have.
It's used a lot of your time.
Yeah.
That could have been used on other things.
Director Peregrino, that's just suffice it to say that the complaints have cost way more in attorney's fees than the rest of.
Thank you.
Am I allowed to text my husband so he doesn't start worrying because he didn't know I was going to stay later?
We will allow it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll give you an educational packet that teaches you about all those things about public records.
Eleven, so this is another one, twenty-four hours notice is not required by state law or, and board policy also allows and recognizes it could be amended. And the practice, the staff take care of packets and links, it is not a board obligation or a board member obligation. Consequently, there do, do not appear to be any facts that support a violation of this policy.
I move to dismiss violation eleven.
I second.
Sorry.
Well.
I'm sorry, I'm moving too fast.
It's been moved and seconded to dismiss violation eleven. There's no discussion, I will call for the vote, all those in favor of dismissing violation eleven, please raise your hand to vote I.
I.
Passes unanimously.
Now, for, violation twelve A and twelve B, these relate to the district's obligation to accommodate. Individuals who have. Disabilities that prevent them from being able to engage in the same way that you and I do. In this particular instance, being able to look at this piece of paper and see it as it's handed to me and be able to read it. We do have a practice, which is why all of us scurry around and get a packet put together for the board secretary to post. So that it goes out multiple days in advance for two reasons. One, we hope that you actually read it and come informed to the board meeting. So that you can engage in a, in a conversation with us in an educated manner. And number two, there, if an individual does have something that impairs their ability to. Look at the documents, see or, or understand them, it gives them the ability. To, to take the time they need to do that, right? And we, we did have a board member who was visually impaired. So when these instances occurred in August tenth and in November ninth. We did probably not provide the documents in advance. For Board Member Pirros to be able to read those documents and look at them prior to the board meeting. We were not necessarily consistent with our practice, okay?
Just clarify that some of the documents did not make, you know, we don't know for sure what they're alleging on August tenth. We do know for sure on August ninth, that we know that some documents may not even have existed. And some of the documents were in staff email boxes and were forwarded. So it depends on which piece of material you're talking about on which date, whether it wasn't distributed in advance when it could have been. Or those kinds of things, so it's. Highly effective.
What document is it, are, are they saying we didn't give them?
Well, and, well, it doesn't, it doesn't say here, but I'm going to interpret based on, I don't know about the August tenth meeting. I do believe the November ninth meeting spoke to the documents that came in for the executive session. That did not actually arrive in the district's office until a little before five o'clock. And, and I think that board members had some of the documents, but there were some difficulties in getting those documents. I think there were some technical issues with some of them. And so I ultimately forwarded a couple of them to the district. A little before five, right, about four forty-five or so, but, but the point being. Is there's at least even, let's assume that the documents did not get where they were supposed to be at the time they were supposed to be. The policy does acknowledge that things can happen within a twenty-four hour window. I guess what I would say is, is. There was a conversation with a board member, we talked about ways to remedy that problem. And we, I think we got pretty good at it afterwards, I think we got more consistent in our practice. In terms of making documents available, making sure that the documents that did get provided to the board member were. Accessible to go through the reader program that that board member used, right? Which required us to save them in a particular way, but. But the fact, a- as we talked about earlier, so let's assume that we didn't get them there on time. I, I think what I would encourage you to think about is to just be thoughtful about the doc, I mean, like. When you, when you decide you want to add something to your twenty, your agenda with twenty-four hours notice, I would encourage you not to add. Highly complex issues that require the studying of tens of, you know, hundreds of pages of paper. And, and acknowledge that there may be some people who haven't had the ability to read those documents and therefore not fully engage. You know, by understanding, hearing, or asking questions, right? So I don't necessarily find that the policy was violated per se, right? There's an acknowledgement that we, that we may or may not have, because I don't know what the documents were on August tenth. I don't know what those were, right? I only know about the one that I actually received, which I think was a, was some of the documentation that related to the Morlock decision. And it came in late afternoon, on Monday afternoon, and I had not been working with you guys.
I know what she's talking about, she's talking about the amendments to the motion.
Ah, okay, thank you.
There's no way for me to.
Have done.
Have known.
Right.
What amendment I was.
Which also speaks to the other problem, right?
Yeah, but also, these are complaints against board members. And board members do not prepare the packets, board members do not. Make sure that they get out in time.
Well, but the, the board, when board members have the documents, it would be important for you to obviously provide them to the district so that they could get out.
But in the case of an amendment to a motion.
Right.
That would not.
Right.
At all be a thing.
Right.
I move we dismiss violation twelve A.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to dismiss violation twelve A, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote, all those in favor of dismissing violation twelve A, please raise your hand to vote I.
I.
Passes unanimously.
What do you want to do at twelve B?
So, I'm trying to figure out what it is, oh, it was the stuff for the executive session. It was handwritten notes, so she couldn't use her.
And she, and they were not provided to her until.
But wasn't that because of like forwarding problems between people who aren't board members?
Yeah, but that didn't happen till Monday afternoon, so. I mean, technically, the. I mean, if the document existed, it should have been posted. You know, it should have been posted with, or provided with a, well, just like we provided you with an executive session packet this Friday, you know, for this meeting. So on Friday, you got two packets from the district, you got one that was like the regular stuff, and then you got one that was an executive session one. That's what we would have done in November if we had had a document for that executive session. And I was copied on the document, I made a request. About whether or not I should forward it or not, because I didn't want to do it if, if I wasn't supposed to, and it was a board member that was connected to it. And we just didn't, that board member just didn't connect with me, and I finally just.
We'll need to wait, oh no, we have a quorum.
We don't have to wait, we have a quorum. Good thing we did that, alright.
So, but yes, you're thinking about the right documents.
Okay.
So I eventually did forward them when I didn't get a response. I mean, Chair Brown's not, I, I mean, sometimes technology.
But there, no one's claiming that they were intentionally withheld from Director.
No, I don't.
To keep her from being able to read.
Sitting, trying to reflect on what I believe the essence of the complaint is. I think they believe, the allegation is that you guys all met ahead of time, made the decision to terminate. So I think they would make the argument that you did do it intentionally, I mean, that you were well on your way to making this decision. And you failed to loop those two board members in or provide them the documents and that therefore it was late. Now, I don't have any facts that are pled here in this that support that particular piece.
Well, and I think, I think the. Piece that they're not recognizing is that document was sent by legal counsel to. I think the board chair, vice chair, Nikki and Dr. Morlock and Lisa around one thirty on that day. As I was leaving for the office, if I recall correctly. And that was going to get distributed to everybody, and then somehow that didn't happen.
Doesn't seem like a ethics violation to me.
It's a, it's a policy.
Yeah, it's a, things we probably could have done better, right? I move to dismiss violation twelve B.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded to dismiss violation twelve B, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of dismissing violation twelve B, please raise your hand to vote I. Passes unanimously.
So allegation thirteen A and thirteen B, you have seen in a couple of the, the facts you've seen, in this particular instance, they are anchored to a policy. That talks about that you cannot use. A quorum of the board cannot communicate even electronically outside of a board meeting. To deliberate decision make or gather information. And it's alleged that that is in essence what happened on August twenty fourth. I, again, would hold these in advance, as you would remember. Tyler would agree with me on thirteen A, and he would have you dismiss thirteen B.
I'm fine with thirteen A, I move that we dismiss violation thirteen B.
I'll second.
I'm seconding.
Any discussion, seeing none, I will call for the vote, all those in favor of dismissing violation thirteen B, please raise your hand to vote I.
I.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, violation fourteen speaks to the fact that on April eighth, the Friday before the Tuesday board meeting, that Chair Brown added an agenda item. Without notifying the superintendent at that moment. And that the impact of that, that the meeting ended up running long. And the material was not available to the public or board members to review prior to the meeting. This goes back to the fact that both policy and statute acknowledge that things could be added. And that that could potentially impact or affect documents being available, but it isn't, even your policy acknowledges the ability to add things.
Yeah, so it's not a legal violation, what is she talking about though, I don't even know what she's referencing.
I really don't know.
I move that we dismiss violation fourteen.
I second it.
There's Chair Brown, we could always ask him.
Hey Dave, do you know? Hey, Dave, do you know what, what uh, number fourteen is talking about? Uh, adding an agenda item? You're muted.
I don't. I was trying to remember that one too right in there, but uh. Give me the date on that one again.
If I was adding the executive session or reviewing complaints about a superintendent.
Late start.
It was the high school bringing in the short report on the start times. They wanted you to change the start time at the high school.
She's complaining about that? Okay, I move that we dismiss violation fourteen. Uh, I call for the vote.
I mean, obviously, it was an important enough issue that you guys realized, and you had them go back and look at it, right? So, but you got a report today on it, so it seems like it resolved itself.
All right, all those in favor of dismissing violation fourteen, please raise your hand to vote aye.
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 Passes unanimously.
Um, fifteen A, um. This was the addition to the agenda for the November ninth to discuss disciplinary action against employee. I would hold this in advance, and I believe, let me look here. Tyler would dismiss because they were provided when they could be provided.
This is one of those that was late. You know, late creation documents that didn't exist, you know, very far prior to the meeting. That was the, yeah, that was the email that we were talking about before.
Is that one covered under the litigation that's currently happening?
I have it as being, holding it in advance.
But not the NC.
They, they didn't sue this. None of their, none of their lawsuit alleges that it was a somehow public meetings violation to add. That executive session to the.
Well, but one of the allegations in the suit is the failure to discuss it with the superintendent prior to. I mean, when you read the pleadings of the plaintiff's case, they do allege that the statute requires you to have that conversation with the superintendent. Twenty-four hours in, in advance prior to that executive session, and that is um.
So I just want to be clear. They're alleging that they viol- that uh, policy was violated when they went and talked to Morlock. Several days ahead, and they're also alleging that we didn't tell them, tell Morlock before.
No, they're alleging that um, what I'm reading this to be is. Um. That there should have been prior notice and um. That this was going to be on the agenda, that documents should have been provided in advance. And that there should have been discussion with the superintendent before the board, before the board conducted that meeting.
We're talking about fifteen eight, right?
I am talking about fifteen.
Because it doesn't say anything about documents. It's just saying that he modified the agenda.
Says whenever possible, the agenda together with supporting materials shall be distributed to board members at least forty-eight hours in advance.
But we have already um, the, determined and talked about in several instances. That, that we do not have a policy that is firm on that.
That is true, um, but there is a separate, which is part of what the, the legal argument is about. Which is about, in that provision on the executive session, it does have a twenty-four hour notice piece. And how does that apply when, in the specific part related to the complaint against Dr. Morlock?
But we're within the twenty-four hours there, because he did it on November eighth, for the November ninth. And what they're complaining about is, in our policy, they try. Whenever possible, the agenda together with supporting materials shall be distributed at least forty-eight hours prior.
Yeah, so the agenda came, but the document didn't come till the ninth. So I believe Chair Brown emailed to, to Dr. Morlock, the addition to the agenda. The document didn't come till the ninth, and you're absolutely right about the policy. I'm just saying that there's a secondary layer here, which is a separate statutory obligation. That speaks to complaints against employees in that executive session law. That is triggered by a twenty-four hour notice, which is separate from your policy.
My, my recommendation on this one is because this potential amendment to that public meetings lawsuit. Is so new and has not been dealt with yet. You know, I think it's, it is definitely unfounded, because that's essentially been dealt with, with the adding to agenda. But that this one is so new that it might be good to just debate this one as well, so it can be processed. This is, like Lisa said, it just came in late last week.
Okay, I'm fine holding it.
That's fine.
Okay.
Lisa, who, who, can I ask it all? I mean, who made that complaint?
Um, these are the complaints that were filed by um, then board member Pirros and Penner.
Yes, makes sense.
Um, fifteen B talks about the material not being get provided ahead of time. And um, lacking the, failing to provide her the accommodation.
We dismiss the, one of those, all right, right? I'll move that we dismiss violation fifteen B.
I second it.
They came to play. Uh, it has been motioned and seconded uh, to dismiss violation fifteen B. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes by raising your hand. Passes unanimously.
Um, fifteen C, this goes back to the April eighth, um, the addition of the late start information. Um, it really helps to know what that information was. Thank you so much. Um, and uh, this goes back to the fact that the policy says the forty-eight hours. With the supporting materials, and that it didn't meet within the forty-eight hour period. Um. But again, there is both state law and policy that allows for some exceptions to that.
Lisa, who, who made this complaint?
These are all, these are all from the same big complaint that they filed on the way out the door.
Gotcha.
Uh, I'm going to move to dismiss violation fifteen C.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to dismiss violation fifteen C. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes by raising your hand. Passes unanimously.
Okay, sixteen A, this is linked to a policy that requires. Um, will ensure equally effective communications as provided to qualified peoples with disabilities upon request. As required by the ADA, and it talks about the August tenth meeting not being provided the materials in advance. I think this is the amendment issue. Director Shannon.
I vote, I move that we dismiss violation sixteen A. We'll discuss that uh, improvements to communication at our board retreat.
Second. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to dismiss violation sixteen A. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Vote aye. Passes unanimously.
Sixteen B.
Roundhog Day.
Lisa, myself, Dr. Navatney, Nikki, all had a meeting with some representatives of Director Pirros's. And we tried to work these things out shortly after um, these events took place. And, and that's where Lisa said things really got better, I think, so, after that, so. Is where rectified and dealt with, you know, later on.
Thank you for that.
Um, violation sixteen B is the documents related to the November ninth, the failure to provide those forty-eight hours in advance.
That we dismiss sixteen B.
Second.
Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to dismiss violation sixteen B. All those in favor of the motion, vote yes by raising your hand. Passes unanimously.
Um, this one is a, uh, violation seventeen is anchored in policy BF. That talks about the ideas that policy will come from. The basic responsibility for initiating, reviewing, and recommending new policies or policy modifications rests with the superintendent. Um, and that the proposed resolution and amendments were passed by a majority of board members. Without the superintendent's knowledge or input on amendments. Um, and the superintendent could be guided, and there's some language in there. Generally speaking, um, I would always tell you, I think it's best practice. The board members and superintendents work together on these things. Um. But um, policy is something that is also a board role and responsibility. Um, and while it's, um, as I said, best practice, for even if you disagree, to sit down and have this conversation. Um, and I do think you got closer to that process when you went back and you created a committee. Um, I, I don't think you came anywhere close to agreeing with each other, right? But you at least had a committee, and you had people that participated, and you, you know. So, but again.
I move that we dismiss violation seventeen. Second it.
It's been moved and seconded to dismiss violation seventeen. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand to vote aye. Passes unanimously.
July thirteenth. Um, adopting new policies or changing or repealing policies is a board responsibility. It will be adopted and amended or repealed only by an affirmative vote of the majority, and they'll schedule for a regular meeting. Um, this is alleging that on July thirteenth, Director Shannon proposed three changes to the agenda during the review of the agenda on the meeting for that day. And these cha- changes were to propose a ban on BLM and black fa- flags to rescind the all students belong policy. And to rescind the anti-racist resolution adopted on June twenty twenty twenty. Now, I, I would tell you that, um, I believe that. What I've read historically is that a lot of these things were rescinded or tabled or not really implemented. In other words, you eventually came up with a different policy, which is currently under legal challenge. That we're waiting to hear, you know, what we can do with it. I.
I don't know how, like, what is the violation that policies were proposed?
That agenda was modified. That's what it seems like.
Mm-hmm.
That you.
But it's, no, because she's, she's saying it violated policy BCF, which is the adoption and revision on policies. And the policy that she's citing is adopting new policies and changing or repealing existing policies is the board's responsibility. Yeah, policy will be adopted and amended or repealed only by an affirmative vote of the, a majority of board members. Such action will be scheduled on the agenda of a regular special meeting.
My recommendation was to dismiss as unfounded.
Yeah. I, I move that we dismiss violation eighteen.
Uh, I'll second, and I do have some discussion. The only reason I did it that way was because Brandy Penner, who was chair at the time, refused to list these on the agenda. In violation of our policies, which says that members can request things to be put on the agenda. I did not file a complaint with that, about that, because I don't like wasting the district's time. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of dismissing violation eighteen, please vote yes by raising your hand.
I hope.
Passes unanimously.
I hope that was cathartic for you.
So, the next one is related to policy KL and JFH, public and student complaint procedures. Um, it talks about um, the order and manner in which complaints should be handled. And um, the violation nineteen is about um, bringing anonymous complaints that have not followed the complaint process. Um, in board policy. This goes back to that conversation I had with you about really where I think you need to, to have a conversation. So that you all understand what constitutes a complaint, what are you going to do with a complaint? What constitutes information that informs your opinion, but um.
Good conversation, not a violation.
I could, I, I could put you guys all in a room, and you could all disagree about whether the conversation was a complaint or something that was.
Well, there, there is a complaint process in which you have to document a complaint. And then once that's filed, there's a follow-up by the superintendent, who's going to do an investigation. That is a complaint. Someone telling me that they have on the supermarket. That they have a complaint that they want to do, I can tell them, file a complaint, or I can listen. And help inform my opinion of people who live in my neighborhood are asking me about this. And when I come to the board and we are talking about this, I say, hey, I've been hearing about this.
And you may even find that what the superintendent wants you to do is that when you hear that person say that. That you actually tell him that you've heard that, and whether, I mean, eh, the, the thing is, you guys have got to figure out how you want to.
And, and I think.
Rather than coming to a board meeting and say, well, my neighbor tells me that you have this particular thing hanging in your classroom. And that should we or shouldn't we take that down?
Right, right. And, and I think I'll encourage us all. And, and as possible as for the public who's listening, if you have a complaint and you really want to follow that as a complaint. There is a complaint process, and I will encourage for those who reach out to me with a complaint. I will be mindful and try to encourage you to file a complaint if that's the route you want to do. But again, I don't want to be shut down to say that you cannot come to me, who, I am in a position of. You know, uh, your uh, official here, sitting for district, for my district. And, and say, no, you can't say anything about me, just go to the anonymous complaint. I don't want to do that either. So it's, you know, um, uh, and bringing this up, like. In ma- filing a complaint about this is just not helpful. Because we want people to be able to reach out to us and talk to us, and we also want them to make complaints. When there is grounds for complaints to be made.
Yeah, the size and nature of the complaint will determine your course of action.
Right, of course, if someone comes and tell me, oh, the teacher is doing something outrageous, I want you to do something about it. Yes, I'm going to bring it to Dr. Phillips, I'm going to ask you to go in and do a formal complaint about it. So that there is a follow-through that is a process. But if you just, if, if you're complaining about something that, you know, I, I don't want to shut you, shut anyone down who wants to reach out to me. But uh, but what, what I'm, what, what worries me is that me as a board member or any of these. Uh, uh, of you guys, if someone tells you something out in the supermarket. And, you know, you end up bringing up as a conversation on that topic here. Now we can't do it because it's not a formal complaint. That does not seem right to me, so.
Which is why I think you've got to think through how, I mean, what do you take from that? How do you share that? And, right, right?
We can go over to our board training in August.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, I move that we dismiss violation nineteen.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to dismiss violation nineteen. Uh, seeing no discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand to vote aye. Passes unanimously. Last one, let's make it a good one.
Uh, this goes back to the November eighth, the modification, the new agenda item and the failure to provide, so. One of those documents was characterized as a complaint. Um, that what was attached to that November ninth executive session. And then the question was whether it was followed the right process, right? Whether the complaint went through the process it was supposed to. Um, in terms of the agenda item and following the policy and the processes, et cetera. I would, because this is still a live issue. Um, I wouldn't, I would just hold this in advance and I would let it do its thing. And I'm thinking, Tyler, you wanted to dismiss by our member correctly.
Yeah, the complaint here said, if the superintendent is subject to the complaint, which it was, the individual may file a complaint directly with the board chair. And, yes, that's sort of what happened here.
Yeah, so what, what would have been?
Well, if you would have.
Alternative courts.
If you, well, but I think you're saying that once you were in that complaint process, there were steps to that complaint process, and we didn't follow those. So, the complaint process talks about giving a copy of the complaint to the employee, and there are various steps that, that. And they're, they're alleging that those steps were not followed.
They say it wasn't investigated properly, and that the complaints were anonymous. Um, I think the biggest thing is, is there wasn't actually disciplinary action taken on that hearing, I mean.
And it wasn't even a complaint, it was just some handwritten notes that one member had heard in the community. So it wasn't even a formal complaint by anyone against.
Uh, let's not go, let's not.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, um. Sorry, doing this in not executive session is a little tricky sometimes.
Um, which is why one of the recommendations is just let it sit there.
Um, all right, I'm fine with letting that one.
Yeah, let it sit.
Okay, I am done.
Again, I would love for an estimation of your hours on this, just for information.
I'll see what I can do to recreate what I.
As long as you don't waste a lot of time doing it.
Yeah, don't waste time doing that.
My work is never a waste. You, you know what I mean? I don't want you to spend more of your time to try to create. But I think it would be important to inform, because there, there have been accusations of wasting resources on lawyers. And here is where we are, two hours, and I don't even know how long it took to, you know, review that.
All right, well, that finishes off our new business. We're on the point of future agenda items. Are there any future agenda items that members would like to request for a future meeting?
Yeah, Director Shannon, I would just like to, Lisa, thank you and Tyler for all that hard work. Sorry. You have to do all that. I, I guess I would just reach out to Mr. Riley and Miss Cold there to maybe talk to Raquel real quick before you go about, she was going to reach out to new board members, maybe with some initial contact and training for you guys. Just questions that we'll follow up on with more formal training that we may have or not gotten. And we'll try to do a better job of that as we move forward into our, our board retreat. So, congratulations. Thank you so much for wanting to serve. And, Dr. Phillips, I think we, we didn't do a very good job about our short meeting, so we'll have to do better next year.
We're staying before nine.
All right. With that, we will adjourn this meeting at ten thirty-six PM. Thank you, everybody, and thank you to our new board members.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Thanks, Lisa. Thanks, Tyler. Bye, Renee.